Welcome, everyone. We'll convene then the joint city council and Water District Board special meeting for Friday, March 19. Thank you Chair Smera and staff of the Water Board and I'm sorry, the Water District. We are very grateful to have this time together to discuss these very important issues together. Chair Smera, would you like to jump in?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, everyone. The special joint meeting with the San Jose City Council is hereby convened. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will call the roll for the Water District. Director Shua. Director Keegan. Here. Director Kremen.
Present.
Director Lizotte.
Here.
Director Santos.
Yes.
Director Varela.
Here.
Chair Estramera.
Aye.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for us of the council?
Menas.
Present.
Peralas.
Here.
Cohen. Crossco.
Present.
Thank you. Davis. Asparza.
Here.
Arenas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Lucardo.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, perhaps we could all stand if you're able to join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair Smera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tony Estramera, as most of you know. I'm Chair of the Valley Water Board of Directors this year. And on behalf of our board, I'd like to welcome the San Jose City Council and in staff. And thank you for joining us today. We have a long history of meeting jointly to discuss topics of mutual interest between our agencies and how we can partner on important issues. Of course, to the benefit of our communities. And even though the pandemic posed a lot of challenges over the last year, I'm pleased that we're both committed to continuing this tradition so that we can best serve our mutual constituents. Despite the challenges of operating during the pandemic, this past year has been a year of action for Valley Water. Our priorities remain focused on providing safe, clean, and reliable water, on advancing and building flood protection projects, and on carrying out our environmental stewardship activities. One of the biggest accomplishments over the last year was the passage of Measure S, which renewed the existing safe, clean, clean water and natural flood protection program that will provide badly needed funding for a number of high priority projects in San Jose, including one that we'll be discussing today, the Anderson Dam Project. However, Valley Water cannot achieve the region's water priorities solely on our own. That's why we're committed to working closely with you. Today's meeting is about continuing the collaboration between our two agencies for the benefit of our mutual community. With that objective in mind, we look forward to today's discussions. I will now turn it over to Mayor Lucardo for any introductory remarks that he may wish to make. And then we'll do introductions. I'll start with our vice chair and then call on my board members as I see them on the screen.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I can't say it any better than Chair Smera and grateful for this opportunity to delve into these very important issues with our representatives with Valley Water. So thank you for this opportunity and let's jump right in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's do introductions then. Our vice chair this year is Gary Kremen, Director Gary Kremen.
Welcome, everyone. Gary Kremen, representing districts D7, Palo Alto, Mountain View, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, Monty Sereno, Las Gatos, and part of Almond and Valley.
And from Director One, Director John Varela from District One.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. I come to you today at the foot of Anderson Dam. If you could see in the background from the beautiful District One, which represents the eastern foothills of San Jose and the through the Coyote Valley, the open space area to local areas of Morgan Hill, unincorporated area of San Martin, and of course Gilroy. Good to be with you all this morning.
From District Two, Director Keegan.
Good morning, everyone. Pleasure to meet with you all today. I represent District Two, central part of the city of San Jose and the southern part of the city of Santa Clara and looking forward to productive discussions. Thank you.
From District Three, Director Santos.
Good morning, everyone. Richard Santos from District Three, which is basically Sunnyvale, North Santa Clara, Alveso, Mel Peters, and all of District Four of San Jose. Again, thank you all and be safe.
From our District Four, Director Lizotte.
Morning, everyone. So nice to see some of the staff that I know so well, Dave Sykes, Nora. Good to see you. I'm Linda Lizotte, I represent District Four, which encompasses all of Campbell and all of District Nine, represented by Councilmember Foley, and parts of District Ten, represented by Councilmember Mahan.
And from District Five, Director Shua was unable to join us today, but she'll be watching and paying attention. Now, I'd like to turn things over to our Chief Executive Officer, Rick Calendar, for the first agenda item.
Good morning, Chair Smera, board members, Mayor Lucardo, and City Council, Rick Calendar, Valley Water CEO. The first item that we have is our Anderson Dam seismic retrofit project update. And the Anderson Dam seismic retrofit project is a key component of our mission to provide this region with safe, clean, reliable water and to protect this region from flooding and remains one of our agency's top priorities. This morning, you're going to be receiving an update on the status of that project from Deputy Operating Officer Chris Hakes of our Dam Safety and Supply and Capital Delivery Division. Deputy Hakes, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and please proceed.
Thank you, CEO Calendar. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here and hopefully this will work. And please let me know if I have any sound issues. So sharing my screen, I'll start the slideshow. Okay, so here today, we're talking about the Anderson Dam seismic retrofit project. Just some brief background on the project. Anderson Dam, as many of you know, is our largest reservoir. It holds 90,000 acre feet approximately, which is large enough to fit all nine of our other groundwater reservoirs inside the footprint for Anderson Reservoir. In 2002, we followed up our independent seismic analysis and started the Anderson Dam seismic retrofit project. That's mainly because the dam was built in 1950. Obviously seismic standards have updated since then. So after our analysis, we determined it was time to bring the dam up to current seismic standards. There was a little bit of a shift in the project on February 20th of 2020. At that point, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, who is the federal body that regulates dams for us, did determine that they were uncomfortable with the downstream community risk when the reservoir might get full. As a result, they ordered us to do a number of things, which I'll cover in a future slide. So here's the existing dam. As you can see on the upper left, there's a spillway. You have a very undersized outlet pipe that runs right under the embankment. The outlet pipe is capable of discharging about 500 cubic feet per second compared to the 90,000 acre foot capacity. That's kind of like draining a giant 55 gallon garbage can with a straw. It's not very effective. We have our dam crest, which is just the top of the dam, the roadway that runs over it, and the dam embankment, which is of course the earth and material that's holding back the water. The retrofit project components are as follows. We will be completely removing all of the liquefiable material that is in the dam embankment. Originally, when the project was conceived in 2012, it was a much smaller project. It was basically just adding material to the downstream or dry face of the dam. That's kind of a typical seismic retrofit for a dam. You just add more material to stabilize everything. Unfortunately, after our geotechnical analysis in 2016, 2017, we determined that there was additional liquefaction potential in the dam embankment. What is liquefaction potential? That means when an earthquake starts, the way the soil interacts, it basically loses a lot of its rigidity, acts kind of like sand on a beach where you think it's solid, you start stepping on it and it gets a little bit watery. And basically it has the ability to drop 20 or 30 feet, which is not ideal, obviously, if the dam is full, the reservoir is full, excuse me. Next component is replacement of the spillway. Originally, when the project was conceived, we were just going to patch our spillway. There were some cracks, some drainage issues, we were going to fix that. But after 2017 and the Orville issue that happened, the California Department of Safety of Dams, which is our state regulator for dam safety, completely revised spillway criteria across the state. As a result, in this project, we're going to completely replace our spillway and that happened, you know, 2017, 2018. We have a new low level outlet pipe that we're installing. As I mentioned, the outlet that's in place right now is very small and it runs under the embankment. It's about 500 CFS. The new low level outlet pipe in the interim condition, which I'll talk about shortly, will be able to discharge at about 2,000 CFS, so about four times the capacity, five times the capacity when you add it with the existing outlet pipe. Ultimately, that low level outlet pipe will be able to transmit at about 6,000 cubic feet per second, which is going to be up to 12 times the capacity of the existing outlet. As you can see, it runs around the embankment through our abutment. That means it's in solid rock and when an earthquake does happen, there is no liquefaction potential there, which means that outlet pipe won't be damaged in the case of an earthquake. We have a temporary water diversion system in order to help drain the reservoir and facilitate construction. And we have a high level outlet pipe. This is one of those new requirements from the Department of Safety of Dams. The new high level outlet pipe has to be able to drain about 30% of the reservoir in seven days. So what happened on February 20th? Basically, as I mentioned, FERC was uncomfortable with the interim risk that was present to the downstream community. So they did a few different things. At the time of the order, our restricted reservoir level was elevation 592 feet. The total elevation of the reservoir, the dam crest is about 646 feet. So we were initially limited to about 58% of capacity. They immediately lowered that restriction down to elevation 565, which is about 35% capacity. That was not an issue. We were already in compliance at the time of the order. And that is because we were in our winter operations mode when we leave a little more space for water that's coming in. The second component was to take all necessary steps to drain down to elevation 488. That is about 3% of the capacity of the reservoir. And 48 is a special number because that's how far we can drain it through our typical outlet. Any lower than that, we have to bring in outside measures. So they wanted it down to as far as we could physically drain it immediately. So we took measures to do that and beginning on October 1st, we did successfully drain the reservoir down to 3%. And that occurred probably about mid-December, we were down at that level. We also have developed a plan to maintain that level as winter rains come in. And we've been working with FERC and DSO to make sure that those discharges are in line with what they are expecting to see. The two kind of most important things that we're going to be talking about today are they did direct us to expedite designing and construction of that low level outlet tunnel. I mentioned there was going to be an interim tunnel that was capable of discharging about 2,000 CFS. That's because we're going to actually put the tunnel in, decrease its capacity to discharge a little bit to keep those flows a little bit more manageable. And we're going to do that starting hopefully this spring.
We have a question from Councilmember Asparza.
Sure.
Thank you, Chair. I can wait until the end of the presentation. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Our low level outlet tunnel is actually out for bid right now. We have pre-qualified six contractors through a best value award. We're looking to open bids sometime in late March, award in late April, hopefully go out to construction the next month in May. And then, of course, they had an onus in that order on actually completing the larger seismic retrofit project. All of these interim measures are a Band-Aid. We cannot fully remove the inherent risk in the facility until it is fully retrofitted. So this is what kind of was a genesis of that February 20th order. Although it seems like we are just to install the low level outlet tunnel, there are actually several components. There are about 11 different elements over four different areas where we have to do something to address that order. Of course, there's the reservoir drawdown, the Anderson Dam tunnel construction, as I've stated, once it's actually in place. But there are some other issues here that are separate projects that we'll be undertaking as well. I've got some of them on some future slides, but in case anyone wanted to read ahead, here's what you'll see coming up. So what does Anderson actually look like at 3%? This is an overhead shot of Anderson when it's full. The little highlight there is actually the footprint of Anderson at 3%. It's actually not empty. It has about 3,000 acre feet, which is as big as our Stevens Creek reservoir. So there is water present. However, in comparison to the full body of water in Anderson Reservoir, it is quite miniscule. In, in, in leading up to the seismic retrofit project and specifically the tunnel construction, there were some specific measures we had to do to make sure the environment was properly mitigated and avoidance and minimization measures were put in place. One of them was a fish rescue. This is a video of what actually occurred during August. If many of you remember, the state was on fire at that point. So we actually had staff, very dedicated staff, who I have to give a shout out to, who were out there and the temperature was about 110, 115 degrees. They were out there in full PPE because COVID is running wild. And they were out there trying to rescue fish. And this is a video of what they actually accomplished. There you go. And you'll see that the fish that were rescued there are actually effectively threatened species. They're on the ESA, which is covered under the ESA, which is the Endangered Species Act. And that is actually Steelhead. So let's go to the next slide. So what are some of the impacts of having that reservoir down to 3% in the overall seismic retrofit project? Obviously, we're not going to have any boating. This shows the fully dry reservoir. Last time it was actually drained, this is 1987. Of course, we do have water in the reservoir right now, but it's well below any of the boat ramps or launch ramps. So we are unable to have boating for the next decade, basically. We also have potential rim instability. What does that mean? So that means there's landslide potential around the rim of the reservoir. Once again, these are pictures from 1987. In order to prevent this, we've actually been working with FERC and DSO on a very slow drawdown rate. So as of October 1st, when we started drawing the water out of the reservoir, we were limited to a net 100 CFS. That actually prevents a lot of this movement that you're seeing. We're taking measures this summer in order to stabilize some of these landsides. So in the future, we will be able to draw down at a greater net rate. But for now, we have a very limited drawdown in order to prevent these instabilities. It obviously had impacts on some of the Santa Clara County parks. All the parks around Anderson, the park has been effectively closed. It's been basically screened off. And that is for public safety. There are different, you know, impacts. There's mud. I know people get really kind of curious on what's going on. They like to hike down there. It's not a safe condition at this point, so the park amenities have been shut down. And I believe the next slide does have a... Oh, so next slide is the Coyote Creek Flood Management Measures. So it's one of those elements you saw. We will be discharging at a higher rate through the low level outlet potentially, once the project is complete. The project is scheduled to start, like I said, probably May, will run through December of 2023. At that point, we'll have the ability to discharge up to 2,500 CFS. The Coyote Creek Flood Management Measures are a little offshoot of the Coyote Creek Flood Protection Project. That full project, I believe, will provide around 20 to 25 year flood protection to the the reaches shown here and reaches four, five, six, seven, and eight. This project will only provide protection against those flows of about 2,500 CFS. So it's not the full management, it's not the full flood protection project. These are actually mitigation measures required in order to operate the low level outlet tunnel. So basically, this is what you'll see per reach. This is reach five. As you can see, we do have some raising of the levees and insulation of flood walls. Reach six, once again, we have some passive barriers, a berm, a flood wall berm, another flood wall. Reach seven, we have the elevation or acquisition of some property that's down in the affected area. I think we have some pictures coming on a little bit later, but that's what we're really working on right now. And then, so these are some of the typical flood walls you might see. There's lots of different types. There's a corrugated flood wall, something more textured than stone, your standard chain link fence on top of something that's buried, or just something with a more wooden feature. We're still working on what the overall aesthetic will be like. We're partnering with the city, obviously, to determine what that looks like. But that is still in the design process. And then we do have the home elevations. As I said, sometimes it's actually more effective rather than putting a wall in because there's a shorter stretch, you want to elevate a home in general. So this is what you would see for a rendering of what a home elevation looks like. You're obviously trying your best to take everything that could possibly be potentially waterlogged and putting it below the waterline. A lot of times in, let's say, Alveso, our community is mandated to have a garage on the bottom floor. And that is actually to get you above the flood line. Um, so where have we been and why has it taken so long? You heard me say that the project was started in 2011 through an independent analysis and started in genuine by the Valley Water in 2012. Well, we have a ton of regulatory agencies. We have over a dozen regulatory agencies that we deal with, federal, state, county, and local. And I don't know if you've ever tried to get concurrence between 13 separate parties with 13 separate missions, but it takes a while. I believe you also heard of all the different scope expansion as I went through the project. So not only has the project been evolving, but in order to get concurrence from all of these different agencies, it's been quite the undertaking. We do have permits that are going to get, we're going to get permits from FERC, United States Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, National Marine Fisheries Service, Department of Safety of Dams. I won't read the rest. You can see it for yourself. There are a lot of permitting agencies, although we're only doing 13 agencies. You can see we have several different types of permits. All that results in the timeline we're currently on right now. I like to focus on the upper portion of the schedule because that's where we're at right now. You can see we're into 2021. We're about to go into construction on the tunnel. You can see we'll be down at 3% for the extended duration. The reason I don't focus on the lower portion is it's kind of based on some of the design that was previously put in place when it was one project. So that construction duration, it reflects the old construction duration. Our attempt is to bring that back in line and basically shrink it down. Once we finish construction on the lower level outlet, we want to roll right into construction on the embankment. So we're hoping to actually compress the construction schedule for the second half of the overall seismic retrofit project. And a lot of that will depend on how our permitting efforts go as the low level outlet tunnel is under construction. And I believe that wraps up my presentation, so I'm open to questions. I'm going to stop sharing my screen. So there we go.
Thank you, Chris. I'll now open the item up for public comments and then, and then we'll follow with discussion. Do we have any public comment requests?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have none at this time. We do have two council members that have requested to speak.
Yes. Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Asparza.
Thank you. I have a few questions. One is my office has been participating in the quarterly meetings hosted by Congresswoman Zoe Ofrin. And one of the things that came out of the last meeting was the project milestone timeline that broke down a lot of the targeted dates for most of this work. And I wanted to ask how closely on track the work is with the dates anticipated in that document. I know that staff was anticipating receiving the final FERC approval for the Anderson Dam Tunnel Project on April 13th, as well as awarding the contract for construction by that date. Is that still on track? I heard April and May, so I just wanted to double check.
So there was, the award is still scheduled for April. Right now, we have been in weekly discussions with Department of Safety of Dams and Federal Energy Regulatory Commission on approval of the project. What we're looking right now at is a phased approval. We went to our independent board of consultants who said the project is construction ready. We're ready to go from the design perspective. However, just the sheer number, sheer number of approvals that are required from a permitting perspective will take some time. So in order to help us out with that, FERC and DSO are looking at phasing the project. So basically, there, what we've heard as of last week is between April 9th and April 13th, we should get partial approval to basically able to award the project. We expect that will come in, as I said, probably the first or second full week of April. We'll then go to our board meeting on April 26th. We did that to allow a little more time for some of the other agencies to get through their reviews. CDFW, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, we're looking to permit the whole facility, not just portions. They're not trying to do the phased approval. They're trying to do a whole approval. So basically, we award on the 26th and that should still keep us on schedule to actually go out to a groundbreaking sometime in May.
Okay, so that's how we got to May. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. So last year, the mayor, Councilmember Peralas, and I submitted a letter in support of AB 3005 to expedite this project at the state level. Very disappointed to see a veto by the governor on this. So I wanted to ask, given this setback, how is, what's happening at the state level on this? Are you getting the response that you need from state agencies?
I know we do have a follow-up bill, AB 271, that will take on our best value contracting. We have been dealing with a lot of state agencies who were involved in the permitting. You can receive commitments to expedite all of the different reviews. So I'd say that we're getting the necessary support that we need. But I'm going to go ahead and kick it over to our Chief of External Affairs, Rachel Gibson, if she has any other additional information that she'd like to share.
Thanks, Chris. Through the mayor and the chair, Councilmember, yes, that bill is proceeding apace through the state legislative process. We actually are in active discussions directly with the governor's staff on that bill so that they know exactly what it entails. I think there was a great deal of confusion around it at the very end of the line last year. We're hoping to avoid that this year. We're pretty optimistic that it will see its way all the way through the legislative process this year.
Okay, and I'd like to know whatever, I'm looking at Lee on the tic-tac-toe screen so that we can do whatever we need to do to support that. Mayor, you look like you have something to say.
No.
No. Okay, thanks. So my last question is, so I represent District Seven, as you know. Along with Councilmember Peralas, our districts were flooded in the Coyote Creek Flood. And so I wanted to ask about that flood project. I understand that the 40% that is being accelerated in the northern section of the project doesn't include any of the portions in District Seven and Council District Three or Council District Seven. I know I'm in Reach Area Eight, which includes the Rock Springs community that was devastated by the 2017 flood. I want, I just want to understand the reasons for prioritizing this work downstream.
Sure. So I believe that's all based on what the flow is. So obviously, there is flooding at different flow conditions. At 2,500 CFS, which is what we anticipate to be the maximum flow for discharge from the low level outlet tunnel, what we are targeting is the areas that would see flooding at that level. Above, I believe that Rock Springs might actually flood above that level or have water come on to the premises. I'm actually going to kick it over, I believe that Alec Nichols is on the panel, he should be. He's actually the project manager that's seeing the overall Coyote Flood Protection Project, the administration and construction. So I'm hoping he's online and can tell you a little bit more.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Alec Nichols, Capital Engineering Manager, Waters, Design and Construction, overseeing the design of the Coyote Creek Project. As Chris mentioned, the reason for prioritizing some of these elements is to make sure that the communities along Coyote Creek between Reaches Four through Eight are protected with these higher flows from the Anderson Dam Tunnel Project operation of 2,500 CFS. So the areas identified in the Reach Eight from the Coyote Creek Protection Project, all of those would not see flooding from the operation of the Anderson Dam Tunnel Project. Those elements would be constructed in the overall schedule and timeline that was presented for the Coyote Creek Flood Protection Project with the completion date of fall of 2025. To also add one clarification point, any of these 40% of these elements that Chris has been mentioning, while they will be constructed on a more expedited schedule and they will provide protection for this 2,500 CFS flow, they will be designed and constructed to prevent or flooding from a 20-year flood event, which is a 2017 event.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilmember Mahan.
Councilwoman Mahan.
Thank you. Good morning. Good to see everyone. I represent District Ten, where we're very happy to have your offices. Nice to see you all. Just a couple of quick questions from me. One is, I'm curious to know a little more about the new embankment and how you assess the strength or resiliency of it. What kind of, what magnitude earthquake can it withstand? How many years do we expect it to be? To be kind of operationally sound? Just curious to learn a little more about that for my constituents.
Sure. So in general, what you're looking at right now is the material that's on the embankment. Sure. So in general, what you're looking at right now is the material that's on the embankment. It's all earth and material, right? However, the gradation of the material is what affects if it becomes liquefiable. So when we remove that material, we're going to put a more finely graded and uniformly graded material in there that drains a little bit better, performs a little bit better on an earthquake. We have two main faults. Basically, I think it's the Coyote Creek Fault and the Rock. Oh, shoot, I can't remember the total. There's another fault that are very close to the actual embankment and the dam itself, within a mile, I think 1.2 miles. So in order to design to the current standard, we are, basically, we look at what the maximum credible earthquake is, right? We're not saying that it's a 9.0 earthquake on the San Andreas Fault because that's not really relevant to what we're doing right now, right? We look at the faults that are in the area. We forecast what the maximum potential earthquake that you could have on either of those faults would be. It's about a 7.2 on one fault and a 6.5 on the other. And basically, if either of those faults should happen to occur, we expect the embankment to perform as designed and basically maybe a little bit of, you know, slumping and depression, but nothing to the order of the 20, 30 feet that we're seeing right now. Quite frankly, the facility life, I think, is forecasted at a minimum of 50 years, but realistically, what you're looking at is 75 to 100 years, depending on how our new design criteria advance. Anderson Dam itself was built in 1950. It's been around 70 years. It's seen all of the earthquakes in the area, Loma Prieta, Morgan Hill, right? It's actually performed quite well. We're just looking at that off chance that there is that maximum credible earthquake on one of those closer faults, and that's what we're protecting against. So as anyone who lives in California knows, earthquakes are very unpredictable. You know, they say we're overdue for the big one, and everyone kind of has that in the back of their head. But the longer we go, it kind of just drifts back and we think, oh, we're doing pretty good. So I would say that, you know, it just depends on when an earthquake might happen, how severe it is, but even in the worst-case scenario, the facility should be able to stand up to that.
Right, thanks. Good to know. And then I'm sure you've done a bunch of modeling around water supply. If we were to head into a drought of some severity over the next decade, given that this is your largest reservoir, what are the implications for water supply, you know, having it offline essentially?
Sure. So we've always known that the project is going to happen. So we've been behind the scenes making plans for augmenting our water supply. We actually have several sources that we rely upon. We have a semi-tropic banking outside of the county. Our groundwater basin is basically full. Our staff did an incredible job in managing the groundwater basin coming out of our last drought so that when they actually came out of the drought, we were at our normal level. We do have imported water supplies and contracts that come in from both the state and federal governments. So all of those together have formed a kind of safety net. The ironic thing with Anderson, or maybe not ironic, but one thing that people don't think about, it is our largest reservoir, but in a prolonged drought, we actually don't have water to place there. So the last time we saw a drought, even though we were under restriction at about 58% capacity, by the end of the drought, you could see there was no water in Anderson. It was getting pretty low, right? And that's just because without the local rainfall, without the imported supplies, we didn't have any water to place in Anderson. So we've done a good job of crafting a different scenario to make sure that the public needs will be met throughout this entire project. And maybe Aaron Baker, our Chief Operating Officer for Water Utility, would like to add a little more to that.
Chris, I think you've got it. We also have, we'll be given a water supply update later on, and we could delve into a little bit further on our current and future water supply. But Chris is correct. We will be more reliant on imported water during this timeframe, but we do have water available, you know, for us to supplement, you know, having Anderson out.
Thanks. I guess I'm curious, what does that mean for pressure on rates, on prices? I mean, does this project increase your expected costs? And is that already kind of baked in? Or how should we think about what this means for costs?
So our Chief Financial Officer, Darren Taylor, I believe is on the line as well, but I'm going to take a first swing at this. We actually have been planning for the Anderson project since we're back in 2012. So he's done a nice job of smoothing the water rates to account for construction of the project. You know, the water suppliers that we're looking at purchasing are dwarfed by the overall capital cost of the project. Currently, I want to say about $650 million when inflated. So that's what we've been planning for, for a long time. It's already built into the water rates. You shouldn't see a blip in the rates because the project has started. This is a, you know, a long time coming, and he's done a very fine job. I'll turn it over to him if he has any additional comment.
Yeah, thank you. So I think the only thing I would add to that is that we have included in the proposed FY '22 budget some dollars for supplemental water purchases to the tune of $12.4 million. Supplemental water purchases and water banking takes for FY '22 just because of the way the water supply is shaping up for FY '22. And that's kind of baked in, and I'll talk more about it in the later on in the presentation on the water charge overview.
Great, thanks. And then final question for me. I'm curious about environmental impacts. I assume higher flows is probably a good thing environmentally, but I'm just curious what it actually means.
Well, it depends on the magnitude of those flows, right? Very high flows, not necessarily the best thing, especially if they're contained. This is actually part of our larger Coyote Creek measures that we're putting into place for FACE, which is the Fisheries and Aquatic Habitat collaborative effort, I believe it's called. And basically, what we're looking at is actually revising the operation of Anderson once it's full in order to create pulse flows and additional flows into Coyote Creek to better support the environment. What we've really been missing for the last decade is a large cold water pool in Anderson, right? That's what the Steelhead love, but we've been down to that restricted capacity about 58%. So we really haven't had the luxury of augmenting flows in Coyote Creek like some of the regulatory agencies or fisheries would like. So once this project is complete, we're actually going to have the ability to better help the environment.
Right, that's great to hear. Appreciate all the extra context. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes?
Councilmember Peralis.
Councilmember Peralis.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And also, I've been benefiting from participating with Congresswoman Lofgren's office in the joint meetings as well as Councilmember Esparza. And that has been very helpful. I think the coordinated effort certainly has helped to move things along. And as was presented by Chris, it is difficult. And I've been watching that and seeing that in regards to all the different agencies involved and certainly have appreciated seeing the progress to date. I just have a question in regards to the high-level outlet pipe. Chris, can you restate, how many days did you say that that would be? It would allow it to drain, I think you said, seven days or something like that?
So basically, it's draining 30% of the reservoir capacity in about seven days. That's the SOD requirement. So it's used for emergency, basically, if a earthquake happens and they deem there's an emergency condition with dam, they would order us to release through that outlet.
Okay, and then I'm just curious, what would induced flooding look like if we were to have that level of release? What does that look like as far as implications, you know, that we would maybe see in a traditional flood? What kind of induced flooding would we see with that type of release?
So I'm not sure that we have our hydrology department on the call because they are the best to tell you where those areas are. We do have our inundation maps, as you know, with Anderson. Those actually look at more of a failure of a full reservoir at, you know, kind of catastrophic condition. That high-level releasing at, you know, at a more measured rate will mean you'll see a lot less flooding than would have been induced. Really, that kind of measure is the kind of a parachute escape, you know, measure that basically, rather than looking at failure of the whole dam and we're looking at a catastrophic scenario, that's when D.O. Subduse kind of says, okay, some of this localized flooding that would be occurring when we're releasing the 30% over seven days is much more preferable than to inundating the entire downstream community in a catastrophic fashion.
Curious then, I guess, if I could get some follow-up on that. I would like to see what that looks like. And I know that obviously there are measures ahead of time, right, that we can look at, like the low-level outlet pipe, right, and being able to try and prevent getting to that point. But as we know, when we hit some of these, whether it's an Amistory River again or other, you know, kind of situations, especially as we get to what we know is inevitable, a major earthquake happening, there may be a time where we have to use this high-level outlet pipe. And so I would just be curious myself to know, and I know my rhythms would be, well, what would that look like? So maybe a best-case scenario, but it still may have some implications.
I think we're definitely capable of getting you that information. We'll work with the hydraulics unit and get that over to you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Mayor Licardo.
Speaker.
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation and particularly the questions of Councilmember Mayhem about water supply. Appreciate that there are other sources, and we'll be talking about this in greater detail, I know, in just another two items. But it'd be also helpful to understand, maybe during that presentation or another, is, you know, does Anderson provide other critical sources that we need to be thinking about? For example, is it a source for recharge that would maintain groundwater levels? You know, I know we've got a tough decade ahead without Anderson, and we know that there's a drought coming. So it'd just be helpful to understand all the implications, both on cost and on supply.
Just, I believe they'll probably cover that in the next presentation, but absolutely.
Great, okay.
Groundwater recharge, that's through discharge to Coyote Creek. We're actually looking to maintain those recharge and discharges through the use of imported water, through construction on Anderson, so we are looking at that.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a member of the public, if you will.
We have a member of the public wants to comment.
Yeah, a member of the public on phone with the last three phone digits of 140.
Okay.
Go ahead. I've unmuted you.
Yes.
I believe you can do a star six to unmute yourself. You're muted. They're not able to unmute themselves.
Okay, perhaps we can have the comment when they can speak. Okay, so we'll have the member, the member can communicate with us. We'll have them come on. So thank you all for the discussion. No motions required for this informational report. Now I'd like to turn things back over to...
Hello?
Yes, oh, yes. Yes.
Yeah. You guys are talking about all this work you're going to do. What you need to do is read some history books about how the Native American people figured out flood control. And they didn't have bulldozers and computers and all this. And it's amazing how, after all these years, this county, city, state, water company, Santa Clara Valley Water, Taj Mahal over there on Almanack or on Blossom Hill Road or Almanack Expressway, you guys can't figure it out? It's unbelievable. It's really bad, and all the rates hikes and fees that you charge, and you can't figure out flood control yet? After all these years, it's unbelievable. And the water rates are disgusting. This is smoke and mirrors, what you guys are talking about now. Then you fluoridated the water, which is poison. That's what the Nazis did in the concentration camps. That's a true story. Read about it. You should all be ashamed of yourself of Valley Water, what you charge people, and how you don't even know what waterways or whose. You know, the county doesn't know if it's the state. You don't know if it's the city. What do you guys know down there? I'd like to know. I'd like you to explain why it's so screwed up. I'd really like to know. Because it's awful, and everybody is furious at these water rates. And now you guys can't even control the dam that you built in 1950. What were you doing all these years that it's come to this? You haven't repaired it or done anything to it for all these years? You guys should be ashamed of yourself. I'd like to hear some answers from these people versus a bunch of hot air. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we'll move right along and we'll have, we'll get back to our CEO calendar for the next item.
All right, moving on to item five, which is an update on the Valley Water District's efforts to develop purified water projects in Santa Clara County. And thank you, Chair Estramera. Item 2.2 will be presented by Assistant Officer Kristen Struve of Valley Water. But before I pass it over, Chris, and I just want to share our sincere gratitude and appreciation to the City of San Jose and the City of San Jose City Manager and staff for your collaboration on this critical project. You know, this is a perfect example of another opportunity to continue our long history of collaboration on recycled water. I'm going to ask the staff to queue up a comment that was, that both myself, as well as the members of my board, were very encouraged by when Ms. Carrie Romanoff appeared at Valley Water's Recycled Water Committee this January after numerous staff-level discussions and provided a comment to Valley Water boards and a commitment to work together. Maybe we can play that clip.
I'm great. Thank you for the opportunity for me to join today. And as Melanie said, the four of us had a really productive meeting on Wednesday. And I think really, you know, daylighted some of the things that we need to focus on and we need to move more quickly. Both Melanie and Rick were clear that the monetary savings of integrating both the new facility with the existing facility was meaningful to the community and very important to Valley Water. And so while I wouldn't say we actually have time to do it, we committed to find the time to do it. And what we agreed to do is that we would each, to kind of cut to the chase, we'd each craft lists of key terms of the new agreement needed to have. And that we'll get our draft list to Valley Water by Tuesday at noon, Monday's a holiday. And then we'll start diving into those and see what we can chip away with and see how we can get to an agreement very quickly and then move through the details so that you're able to meet this timeline. You know, as Melanie said, we've tackled this a long time. Our city attorneys have concerns about private activity. We've spent a lot of time on it together. And I think now that there's more clarity on the project, my hope is we can reach agreement and come away with a plan that doesn't concern, doesn't create any legal risk for our existing bonds and enables Valley Water to move forward with this project. We're super excited about the project. We think it's, again, very important to the region and want to continue to be a great partner with Valley Water.
Well, obviously, from the clip, you can clearly understand why we're encouraged. However, when I read the City of San Jose staff memorandum, I was a bit perplexed to see the suggestion of options to possibly delay negotiations and encouraging us to proceed with the Palo Alto Mountain View project instead of San Jose and not pursue a win-win for San Jose and Valley Water, especially in the face of a drought. I know this project can be beneficial for San Jose, both financially and in the face of climate change, to meet San Jose's climate change action goals. The San Jose project is Valley Water's preferred project. And I hope after the presentation from our staffs, both the council and the board will agree that this is a cost-effective solution for Valley Water and the city to help us meet our mutual and our individual goals. We do look forward to working together and moving quickly on solving the outstanding issues of this critical project. And after the staff presentations, I'll come back and summarize the asks of Valley Water. And with that said, I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Officer Struve to start.
Chair Estramera, I think it might be appropriate, since a portion of a clip was played, to actually ask Director Romanow to be able to provide the context of the portion that was cut out of that clip for everyone's benefit. Could we ask Director Romanow to do that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Licardo. Certainly surprised to hear the clip. And what was, the context of the conversation really was, you know, Rick met with, Rick, Melanie met with Dave and I, and we agreed to talk for four weeks. We said, hey, you know, if there's a way to get to agreement on this, we would talk for four weeks. Four weeks turned into six, and we stayed in the game, but we certainly haven't reached agreement. And so, you know, I think it's a little inaccurate to portray it as though, you know, we said we were in both feet for the long haul. We did say we thought it would take about two years to get to that kind of agreement, but, you know, at Rick's request, I agreed to talk for a month.
Thank you. I think it's important to have that context. I think that's a pretty unusual tactic that I've ever seen in which we've ever played a clip of someone's staff. So I hope that we can be more collaborative in how we work together on this because, you know, that kind of approach is not one that I think lends itself to collaboration. So I look forward to staff's presentation.
All right. And at that, we will turn it over to Assistant Officer Struve to start our presentation.
Yes, good morning, Honorable Board and Council. My name is Kirsten Struve. I'm Assistant Officer in the Water Supply Division, and I will be presenting this item. Please let me know if there's any audio issues or you can't see the screen. With climate change, Santa Clara County will face more droughts with resulting economic impacts. We are also very concerned about land subsidence, which is the sinking of the land when we overpump our groundwater. The chart on this slide shows how land surface sank when groundwater was overpumped with increasing population development in Santa Clara County. And this can also have significant impacts on our infrastructure. With half of this Santa Clara County's water supply being imported from outside the county, it is very important to continue to develop locally controlled supplies. That is why recycled water and purified water is an important component of our water supply portfolio. For some definitions, recycled water refers to treated wastewater that is used for non-potable uses such as irrigation and industrial cooling, and it is distributed in purple pipes. Purified water undergoes additional processes to produce water that is suitable for drinking. Recycled and purified water is currently five percent of the county's water supply. Valley Water and the city have a long history of collaborating. Valley Water in collaboration with the city constructed the Silicon Valley Advanced Water Purification Center at the regional wastewater facility to enhance and expand the use of recycled water for customers of the South Bay Water Recycling System, which serves customers in San Jose, Santa Clara and Milpitas. This purification center uses microfiltration, reverse osmosis and ultraviolet disinfection. Similar technology also provides safe, clean and reliable water to astronauts on the International Space Station and water suppliers around the world. The highly purified water is blended with the recycled water, which is produced at the wastewater treatment plant, which is also pictured here, to enhance its quality to the level more suitable for the irrigation and industrial uses. Capital contributions to construct the facility included $11 million from San Jose and $65 million from Valley Water. And Valley Water provides operation maintenance services for the facility with a cost shift from the city through the integration agreement. Valley Water's operation and maintenance has provided $12 million towards enhanced recycled water quality since the facility began operations in 2014. This facility has demonstrated the safety, cleanliness and reliability of advanced water purification as a new locally controlled and drought resilient water supply. It has so far produced 10 billion gallons of purified water. Valley Water has also collaborated with the city and other partners on developing the countywide water reuse master plan as well as the previous South Bay Water Recycling Master Plan. And potable water reuse was found to be the most cost-effective investment for the future. The Valley Water Board gave direction to staff in June 2020 with, to proceed with a purified water project as soon as feasible to replenish our groundwater supplies. This is known as indirect potable reuse. Our board will have to make a decision as to where to locate the new facility, either an expanded facility in San Jose or a facility in Palo Alto. Valley Water signed an agreement with the cities of Palo Alto and Mountain View in 2019 for wastewater for a regional purification facility. Staff are currently working with the city of Palo Alto on an option to lease land. However, as Rick said, our preferred location would be expanding our existing purification facility in San Jose. You will note an arrow leaving the purification facility that is called RO Concentrate. That is reverse osmosis concentrate. Basically, RO removes viruses and pollutants. And this is the same technology that would be used for desalinating seawater. So for every hundred gallons that go into the, into the facility, eighty-five gallons of pure water are produced and fifteen gallons concentrate all the dissolved constituents that were in the water already. That is the RO concentrate or also called brine. And there's no material added, so the amount of pollutants, including nutrients, is the same. At the current facility in San Jose, the RO concentrate is blended with the wastewater effluent and discharged to the bay. This approach is included and allowed in the treatment plant's permit and has been used without environmental impact since 2014. We have also been working on many other evaluations and analyses to find other solutions for RO concentrate and have been working closely with, with the regulators and conducting studies to, to support that. Regulators and the environmental community have been very supportive of increased water recycling and the need to manage the waste stream cost-effectively. Our analysis in our countywide water reuse master plan found blending with the wastewater effluent to be an effective solution that ensures the treatment plant can meet its permit requirements. The project also includes eighteen to twenty miles of pipeline to convey the water to our Los Gatos recharge system in Campbell. The purpose of this project is to further develop purified water as a drought resilient local water supply. Per our water supply master plan, we have a goal to double the share of recycled and purified water in our portfolio to 10%. And our Board of Directors has asked to implement this project as soon as feasible with procurement later this year. An expanded or integrated facility in San Jose would best serve our mutual rate payers due to the substantial cost savings of at least $50 million and operational efficiencies that would be realized, which is why our recommendation today is to direct staff to collaborate to complete negotiations for the needed agreements by June 2021 with direction to prioritize an integrated facility located in San Jose that provides purified water for groundwater recharge. Such an expanded facility would leverage our current partnership, have reduced environmental footprint and increase cost efficiencies to support the South Bay Water Recycling Program. The Palo Alto Agreement includes support for non-potable recycled water in terms of wastewater transfer for RO concentrate management and cooperation on a land lease. Valley Water, City of San Jose and City of Santa Clara staff have been discussing expansion of purified water for a number of years and have recently had very productive discussions for the proposed agreement with San Jose and Santa Clara that is based on the Palo Alto Mountain View Agreement and will include revising our existing agreement to the, to expand the facility, water transfer, land lease and continued RO concentrate management. This is not only a win for the region by diversifying our water supply, it is a win for the city and its partners. And we looked at the principles in the city staff report and have the following to offer. There are significant financial benefits consistent with the Palo Alto Mountain View Agreement, which included a $16 million payment upfront for capital projects, $200,000 a year option payment for wastewater and then $1 million a year for the wastewater that is used for groundwater recharge. And there will also be lease payment for the additional acreage needed for the facility. Valley Water currently subsidizes the existing facility, which benefits San Jose and its partners. This proposed project does not increase mass loading to the bay and we are committed to collaborating with the wastewater facility and regulators to ensure that all regulatory issues are addressed. The project minimizes greenhouse gases by requiring less construction, having more efficient operations. And due to the cost savings of the expanded facility impacts to the city and county's water rate payers are less. And finally, it ensures a long-term viable water supply, which is the, the reason for this project. In October 2020, the board directed staff to launch a public-private partnership or P3 procurement plan. The P3 approach will use a design, build, finance, operate, maintain, delivery method where a private entity delivers the project. Valley Water will retain ownership of the project and partner with this private entity. The benefits of this approach are that we will realize accelerated project delivery and efficiencies in project construction lifecycle, which will reduce the impact on our rate payers. This facility is estimated at half a billion dollars, so it's quite a significant investment. The P3 transaction will be detailed, well detailed and the RFP will ensure that there is no impact on private activity limitations affecting the wastewater facility. We are currently working to get all necessary agreements in place for our board to make a decision on the most feasible location in the summer of this year. We will release an RFQ shortly and then an RFP in the fall. And we hope to have our procurement completed in 2022, at which point the private entity will work to design and construct the project by 2028 and then have water flowing to our Los Gatos recharge system. Valley Water is developing an EIR that will analyze the environmental impact of this project and a scoping meeting is scheduled for March 29th. I will now turn it over to Jeff Provenzano, Deputy Director of Water Resources with the City of San Jose.
Thank you, Kirsten, one sec as we bring up the presentation.
City Manager Sykes has a, his hand.
City Manager Sykes has a question?
I wouldn't call it a question, but I'm happy to say it now. You know, I, I do think it's important to kind of clear a few things up here. You know, a while back, as, as Carrie, Rick mentioned, Carrie, Rick and Melanie and I met to kind of talk about this project and, and how we move forward. And as Carrie mentioned, we, we agreed that, yeah, let's take the next four weeks or so and try and figure out if we can really have a path forward for us. After about four or five weeks or so, I checked in with Carrie or she checked in with me and seemed like we hadn't really made very much progress. And I, I'd called Rick and talked it over with him and felt like we, we weren't quite there yet. That it seemed like, you know, that this, the scope of the project had changed. And I, I also expressed to Rick some concerns about moving forward with the session today. Mostly from the standpoint of recognizing that, you know, we are an extremely capacity constrained organization. We are fighting COVID. I mentioned to Rick that we were in the process of working through a roadmap with the council. This project isn't even on our roadmap. We have so many COVID-related priorities and other priorities that we're working through with the council. And if, if we really can't figure out a straightforward way here, and that's really what we need to do, a very straightforward way, we just can't, don't have the ability to, to put resources to this. Carrie is extremely involved with EOC operations and her, her team are. And so I, I thought we kind of had an understanding, Rick, on that. And I am very sorry if our reality is inconvenient for you. I am, but that is our reality. And so we need to pick a straightforward way to do this or we're not going to be able to support it. Thank you.
CEO Calendar.
Okay. I'm sorry, is there a question there? Maybe not.
No, I think CEO Calendar wanted to, wanted to respond.
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you, City Manager Sykes. I think it is definitely a, a very accurate description of our conversation. What I was purely trying to show is that there's definitely a collaboration and willingness to try to make this work. I understand that we are all in the stages of responding to COVID and the emergencies that are on our backs currently. And yes, we're hoping that we can find a collaborative path together in order to make this work. And so hopefully, after we get to the staff conversations and we can enter to a conversation of what that path may look like, if any. So I'll turn it back over to staff to continue with the conversations and I look forward to the discussion following this.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Good afternoon, my name is Jeff Provenzano, Deputy Director for the City of San Jose and with me is Amit Matsudi, Deputy Director of Wastewater Management. I'll just do a quick, a quick overview here. We've been working with Valley Water, obviously, for, for quite a water, quite a while on coming to some terms. Really the complexity, and I want to kind of get into this and it leads into our further presentation. The City of San Jose, as we know, is the responsible agency for wastewater management for ensuring that we're collecting the wastewater, treating it and getting out to the bay. Valley Water, obviously, is a responsible agency for supplying water supply. And the way the project is moving forward is to really come up with a blended solution of responsibilities, where we're both trying to achieve our own individual goals of what we're responsible for and trying to come together. And that adds several layers of complexity and we'll kind of, several layers of complexity. And Amit's presentation will really kind of dive into the wastewater world of what we do, regardless of coming together, what the wastewater world of what he does every day and what they are looking at into the future. Because when we talk about blending of facilities for joint purposes, really it's, in a lot of ways, it's Valley Water entering to our discussion on the wastewater side and everything that we're seeing into the future and what we need to do to change and adapt to continue to treat water and get it out into the habitat safely. Here, back in September, it was mentioned before, council directed city staff to establish a negotiation team to look at two programs, both recycled water and purified water. To date, we haven't yet negotiated or talked about expanding the recycle water system with Valley Water. We have really just focused on the purified water aspect. Council also directed staff to prioritize solutions, you can see them there, that really looked at several things, making sure that there's no impact on the habitat, making sure there's no additional liabilities or adverse financial impacts on the, our wastewater system or our sanitary system. Of course, looking at the nutrients and the pollutants that are in wastewater that are moving out into the bay and making sure that that also doesn't have an adverse impact. On the other side of it, though, is drinking water rates. And at the end of the day, this type of project has to be paid for by somebody and that is in a water rate. And so from a staff perspective and council direction to staff, we want to keep an eye on that too. Any solution should also consider what is going to be the end, impact on customers. And of course, for, an interest for everybody, I believe, is long-term viable water supplies. And with that, I'm gonna pass it on to Amit. And his presentation is usually a little bit more technical than we usually provide. But our intent here is not to contradict anything that was said before, but really to kind of give a flavor out there to board and council of what we are looking at on the long term, day-to-day and long term, on the wastewater side and what we are looking at as we continue negotiations with Valley Water. Amit?
Thank you, Jeff. Honorable Mayor and the board and the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Again, my name is Amit Matsudi, Deputy Director, Operation and Maintenance for the Regional Wastewater Facility. Just wanted to give you a quick overview of our facility, what we do. We're located at the southernmost tip of the San Francisco Bay. We process the wastewater, treat the wastewater from thirteen tributary agencies, which includes San Jose, Santa Clara, Milpitas and all the adjacent cities. We are the largest wastewater treatment in the Bay Area. The treated water goes through Artisan Slough to Lower Caudy Creek and then a part of the bay, we call it the Lower South Bay. Our water discharge is heavily regulated under the Clean Water Act, which gives the state and the regional board the authority to standardize and put strict numeric limits on many, many constituents that goes into the bay. And we have to monitor it monthly, daily, and then there are, there are strict performance requirement when we violate them. So just to give you an overview again, on, on, on the Valley Water project, proposed project is the water purification and the part that we need to think through more and do, do a lot more investigation on what is the impact is the brine. The brine is the byproduct of the reverse osmosis process. And right now, the proposal is to buy, put the, put the brine directly into our effluent. And as the names, you know, suggest, the brine is what is brine. It's a concentrated salt. But what we are concerned about is the nutrient, which is the inorganic nitrogen part of the, of the salt. So which is mostly ammonia nitric and nitrate. Why are they so important? Because they can contribute towards large algae blooms in the bay, in the receiving water. Also, it can result in a lowering of the dissolved oxygen level. It's, it's gonna, it's like when you see the water turn green. It's not the celebratory Saint, Saint Patrick's Day green. It is really bad when it, when a water body goes green like that. And then along with that, we can also have HIV, harmful algae bloom, which carries the toxin, which can also get into the various aquatic species. So now historically, our bay has been very resilient. But we don't know whether we are at the tipping point or whether we, whatever, we're gonna, concentration is gonna increase, whether that's gonna be something gonna set it to a, a, a level that we don't want to go to. Most of the nutrient that gets to the bay comes from wastewater treatment plants all around the bay. There are thirty-seven all around the bay and about 65% of this nutrient load is from the wastewater plants. Twenty percent comes from the Delta Agriculture activities and then rest from the stormwater runoff. So I didn't really want to go through the whole, how this gets over here, but it's, it is a very complex mechanism of how that species and interdepend on each other and it's a delicate balance. And the nutrients, what we, we are contributing to is goes into the phytoplankton, which is the algae. And then there is a delicate balance of consumption by them, by the grazers. And if it doesn't, if it access of it, it results in the organic matter, which will then create a, you know, demand for BOD and bacterial consumption, which will also contribute to, you know, lowering of the. create a, you know, demand for BOD and bacterial consumption, which will also contribute to, you know, lowering of DO. Other concerns, you know, we, right now, our agreements with the Water District is for microplastics, I'm sorry, is for recycled water. And the recycled water does not, you know, have the same limits as potable water. So what I mean is there are these constituents that I listed here have higher standards for potable water and may have the same similar standards for downward recharge. So our current technologies that we use at the facility, we cannot remove microplastics or any of these thousands of emerging contaminants or PFOS or any of the NDMA with our current treatment technology. I also listed a, you know, graph here. It's a data intense graph. But what I wanted to show you is the seasonal variability of the plant water that we get for the wastewater we get. And what happens in the summer, you see the dips that we get, it's in the summer because of lower flow. And then that's when we have higher water demand. What that means is the concentration of the constituent that are going out into the bay is going to be the highest one. And if we add on top of that more expansion of the recycled water, we have to think about what the concentration is going to do to the receiving water body. One of the things that we are actually, right now, our permit says, whatever we do, our treatment process cannot contribute towards lowering the DO, the dissolved oxygen level less than five milligrams per liter in the receiving water. So what's the concentration going to do? We really need to look into the details and study. Another thing I want to point out, and this is like I took a 10 year data to show the nutrient loading into the coming into the our facility and going out. It has, you know, varied over the years. And our current watershed permit is looking at putting a load cap right around 6100. And that's what it's going to stop. So as the population grows, we still have to, you know, have an improved improvement, improve and invest on treatment technologies so we can remove and stay at the 6100 kg per day. Lastly, I'll show one last graph to illustrate what the what the concentration could be. You could see, this is a diagram with our average final effluent flow, and we have the TIN level, which is the total inorganic nitrogen. And that goes higher when the flow is lower. So that would happen to all the constituents. And what is that going to do to the water environment downstream? Is what we need to evaluate now and then agree on the terms and who's going to remove what constituents and what degree. These are a lot of details. Staff, I want to, last thing I want to mention is staff is has to be heavily engaged on this effort from wastewater side. And we need to work together, and we did work together at the first phase of year when the Silicon Valley Water Purification Project was first started, the first phase. And our subject matter experts has to engage in this technical discussion forums and design. There's a lot of interconnection between the two projects. But right now, we are also in the middle of the $1.5 billion reconstruction and rebuild of the facility. As you can see, I'm not going to go over all these projects. These are snapshots of all the projects that are going on in the facility. What it means for us, we, I'll give you an example, there is 120 people needed every day to run this facility. Then now we have upwards of 300 to 400 construction people working every day. We almost at the peak and of construction activities and it's expected to continue next at least two, three years. And then, you know, what it does means, so we are we are heavily constrained staff. We do almost 100 plus shutdowns a year, major shutdowns, diversions, which means two every week, sometimes even more. So that puts a lot of constraints on our, on our subject matter expert to collaborate. But we, I am, I am conservative when it comes to, you know, totally understand, you know, that's just being a wastewater man, being the responsible for wastewater. But I like to be on the details and like to understand the details and have to be on a hand on a, on a, on a very confident level that where we need to go from here to be able to successfully deliver the project and for ensure the public safety and ensures the health of the bay. So with that, I will hand over to Jeff.
Thank you, Amit. And I'll do a brief summary then of what I heard from Amit, maybe a very high level. It's extraordinarily complex what we're going through right now, both on the wastewater side, on our capital program. But all the criteria that we're continuing to monitor out into the future to ensure that we're doing the job that we're being held responsible for. And as we continue negotiations and discussions with Valley Water, that's going to be there in the forefront of our mind of how can we blend their responsibility of what they want to achieve with our responsibility and what we have to do. Here, you can see here, we have to really fully evaluate any potential impacts to the RW of effluent water quality. We really have to do a long term operational analysis, what could be our potential constraints? And how can we set up an agreement with Valley Water that could that would not restrain us or restrict us in adapting to changes for us in treating wastewater? Of course, we also want to keep an eye on long term impacts for recycle water supply and quality. Most of you know, bond status, we have 100% public bonds there at the wastewater treatment plant to do all of that capital work. And it's a really important for us that we also keep an eye on the legal and the legal analysis of private activity to see if there is a risk to our bond status. And finally, staff resources, that was mentioned a little bit before. To go through all this is a significant effort and does require a subject matter expert. That's a term that we use, especially at the Regional Wastewater Facility. We need people there in the room that understand that the impacts of doing a blended responsibility or a blended type project and what the true impacts could be all around. Thank you, Amit. The next one? Next slide.
I am on the next slide. You cannot see it? Okay, sorry.
So next steps. There are several agreements that are we have to go through. Obviously, you've heard about the Palo Alto Mountain View Cell Agreement. That's one that is an option of water rights basically to Valley Water for financial compensation. That type of agreement would need to be negotiated. After that, there's a long term ground lease agreement for the expanded facility. Then we need to negotiate per Valley Water's request. And I believe we said, yeah, we'll talk about it, but to negotiate revisions to the 2010 integration agreement. And the reason why we call it an integration agreement, this is for their existing facility. It's because that facility is integrated in with our operations, like we're talking about an expanded facility. So that we need to negotiate revisions to that, negotiation and negotiate revisions or revise our existing operations agreement. That agreement kind of details on a day to day basis. Operators of one facility will coordinate and collaborate with operators of the other facility. And as we look at an expanded purified water facility, that operations agreement would have to be revised or altered. We also need to negotiate terms for reverse osmosis concentrate that was mentioned both, I believe, in Kirsten's presentation and Amit touched upon it, too. That is a very in-depth technical topic. And we need to negotiate terms on how that will be resolved. Of course, we also have interagency collaboration. There's the City of Santa Clara, which is a co-owner of the Regional Wastewater Facility. Their consideration and approval will also have to be considered. And there's a Treatment Plan Advisory Committee. So any potential agreements and analysis that we do should be brought back to that committee for their consideration. And with that, staff recommends that council accept this report. And the staff will return to council in the next few weeks with a recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to summarize staff's recommendations for the board. So in order to summarize what we're asking from Valley Water, we're respectfully requesting that the city council direct staff negotiate with Valley Water to come to an agreement and help us meet our timeline in the interest of our residents and an integrated purification facility in San Jose. It's especially important right now as earmarks are back in Congress and under consideration as we're immediately talking, as well as drought is knocking on our door. We're committed with working with the city and its partners to resolve any remaining issues. From the staff presentation, I did hear a number of concerns in the presentation, many of which I'm fairly certain don't apply to the project, but instead are concerns of the wastewater plant. But regardless, we will work together to solve the mutual concerns. That said, we've proven that our approach to managing discharges from the purification facility do not impact the treatment plant's permit compliance. And we do know that there is a path forward on this issue. If you, as you've heard, the council would realize significant financial, environmental, and community benefits to have this project occur in the City of San Jose. We believe expanding the facility in San Jose is a win win for both our agencies, the public, and the environment. Chair Estramera, I turn this back to you to lead the discussion and any questions that you may have for staff.
Thank you. Okay, now, I will now open this item for public comment and then as previously, we'll come back to a discussion. Do we have any requests to address this?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I have two members of the public that have requested to speak. First one is Robert Reese.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a resident of the villages in Evergreen District Eight. And I want to let you know this collaboration and this joint meeting really helps give me confidence in the functioning of our local governmental agencies. It seems like you had met within the last year, maybe not, but this is a good thing. As I read the report, what I thought I read, and I hope I'm wrong, is that Palo Alto was being given a more advantageous deal on this purification process than had been offered to San Jose. I hope I'm wrong, but if they were in the negotiations, I would like to see parity. As a San Jose resident of a responsible regional city with a challenged tax base, there's just something that seems wrong about a tax rich city that hasn't been as responsible as San Jose as a housing hero and doing the right things regionally would get a better deal. Keep up the good work and keep collaborating. I think that this can be worked out.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. I'm sure that both staffs might want to respond to you. But we'll take the next comment and then see if there's a response, then we'll get to our discussion.
The next member of the public is Mr. Daniel Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, you can unmute yourself and speak.
Okay, I'm sorry. About 13 years ago, I attended a water crisis presentation at Stanford. And the alarm was set as to a crisis like we are heading to it right now. I believe that we are reacting instead of acting. I would like to see more conservation plan that is measurable and attainable. Also, I oppose an increase in water rates due to the pandemic crisis. I believe the economy is driven by two forces, energy and water. But unfortunately, our economy right now with the pandemic is not the time to have an increasing water rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Licardo?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the recommendation of Mr. Calendar, it is the case that the council has already directed back in September that staff move forward together collaboratively with the Water District. I'm confident we are going to get to a collaborative solution. Appreciate also the chairman of Vice Mayor Jones. I would just suggest, I think those are all good recommendations, but they should come back to council. I think we need an opportunity to be able to fully vet all these issues. I think there's some legal issues clearly in closed session we need to understand regarding the private activity bonds, and then in the open session where we can have more, I think, a more in-depth conversation. So I think there's a good idea for us just to come back in two weeks with council. And we can hopefully get this all resolved.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say about a year and a half ago, Rick Calendar approached me about having a conversation of how we can collaborate with the Water District to build out a water purification facility. It was a great first discussion. Tony was there as well as the members of our staff. And it really started out on a positive footing. And I want to commend our staff, Carrie and Jeff for being willing to engage in the conversation. They've been open to every suggestion that my office has had. I know that my involvement and engagement with the folks at the Water District has been very positive. You've been very open to moving the process forward. So we're at a point where it needs to be some type of disconnect of the process and moving forward and how we can work together to to create a win win for both the Water District and the city. I propose in my memo a path forward and a structure to continue to move forward because initially, none of this is straightforward. Initially, the focus was going to be on getting an agreement that was similar to the Palo Alto Mountain View Agreement. Obviously, there's other elements that have been added based on the presentation and everything that we've learned over this process. This is a very complex issue, and it's not going to be resolved quickly as well as the resource constraints that our city has and our staff has. So I'm going to defer my memo and bring it back to our council, but I just want to say that I want to work together with the Water District and with your team to create a path forward where we could truly have a win win. But we got to work through these these complicated issues, and it's going to take time, it's going to take resources. But I'm confident that we can make it happen, but we have to be willing to roll up our sleeves, get into a room and work things out. So that's all I have to say.
We have a council member, Arenas.
Council member Arenas?
Thank you. So just for clarification, it sounds like Vice Mayor, you're going to defer your memo. Are we going to meet in two weeks once again? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
That would be my plan, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, you know, I guess I'll maybe that's why some of my colleagues were not raising their hands because this is a deferred conversation. But before we go, I just want to make sure because I have a lot of residents whose rate, water rates would increase. And you've heard some of them call today, but have received messages and letters of concern. And, and, you know, we always want to be responsive to our residents. And, you know, we rely on Valley Water for rates. So everything has a consequence, right? The projects that we invest in, the increases that we have over the years. Earlier this week, I asked my council colleagues to help cover some of the bad debt that we refer to, bad debt, because there is a lot of rate payers in San Jose who just couldn't make their water bill. And so that leaves a hole for us to have to fill. And when that happens, that means that our library services may be impacted or our community centers are impacted. These are all, you know, community facing services that when things are very difficult, people look to us to solve for them. Or they rely on us, one, because they trust our services. And I think I want to believe that all of our enrichment activities and classes and anything that we offer that is cost recovery is of great quality and investment for our community and at a very affordable rate. And so rates are always on my mind. Sometimes we even provide scholarships, up to 75% coverage on a lot of these classes and so that we can give families a break. And so this is where I think we are, or at least I am and my residents are concerned, is we need to give them a break. And we need to make sure that we prioritize the type of projects that makes sense for the time. Now, maybe last year, when you all had a previous conversation or the year before, this might have made this might have made sense. I still want to learn more about the difference between the Palo Alto project and the projects that's being proposed to us, because I did hear, Rick, you mentioned that in your comments. I think it was you. I don't, I... We've had a lot of comments, so I apologize if I don't remember exactly who, but I thought it was you. And so that really interested me when you mentioned that, or whoever mentioned that. And so I guess one of the things that I'd like to just walk away with today is learn a little bit more about that, so that when we come back in two weeks, I can have some clarification. I think it's important for all of our council colleagues, for myself, to hear about that and to hear about, you know, what is the cost to us, how does that impact us? And consequentially, how does that impact our residents? And so I don't know if maybe Carrie or Jeff or anyone on Valley Water can tell us a little bit more about the difference in terms of the projects.
Thank you, council member. I can start. You know, as we mentioned, the Palo Alto deal is a bit narrower and sort of exchanged money and then started working on additional points of negotiation. And in terms of...
I'm sorry, Carrie, when you say exchange money, what does that mean?
So as Kirsten mentioned in her presentation, the Palo Alto deal, Palo Alto was compensated, I think, here's about sixteen million. And then they moved into the discussions about land lease negotiations, how brine would be handled, and if the project would ever happen or not. So sort of the, my understanding of the deal is it's a framework to begin negotiations towards a potential project. And so certainly, that's what we thought we were agreeing to do over the last year. And then as Valley Water, you know, looked at the project more closely, they wanted to also change a bunch of other factors, which expanded the scope beyond our capacity, just increased the complexity. But, you know, we've been ready since last February to sign a deal just like Palo Alto and happy to accept sixteen million dollars and then move into discussing the balance of the issues, as you've done in Palo Alto, which has been happening over several years. So certainly wastewater facilities, as Amit articulated, have a lot of issues to investigate. And we do believe that the brine poses a risk to the environment, and we need a lot more information before we're comfortable accepting that, particularly since we're looking at a seventy-five-year deal. So what we want to avoid is helping build a facility and that then, when it's constructed, we say, "I'm sorry, it can't operate because we can't take your discharge." So we don't want to sign on to something that we're not comfortable doing. In terms of how the project impacts rates, I think I'll let Valley Water, Kirsten, or someone take a stab at that one, because I'm not, I don't really understand that.
Sure. And Carrie, before you move forward, I think, and I forget who was from Valley Water, I apologize. There's a lot of people on this tic-tac-toe screens, I'm really sorry. But I know that he talked about the treatment ecology, and for the body of water who's going to receive some of this, what you call brine, right? I don't know what it ends up being called once it touches the water. I'm not the expert, but because that, oh.
Amit.
Amit, oh, thank you. Amit, thank you. Great presentation, by the way, was really breaking things down to the point that I think I almost understand. I appreciate it. So one of the things that really caught my ear was that we didn't really know what the impact would be to that body of water that receives the brine. And so when do you expect that kind of study to be completed? You know, and would that study then follow this negotiation? For me, this would be the question that I would ask, not you and me, because, you know, unless you want to tell me. But I'd like to just know, you know, how would that work? How long would it take?
So Amit, let me start, and then I'll hand it over to you. So council member, that would be a study that we would partner with Valley Water on. Obviously, it would be a necessary part of their project, and they've done some work on that. And so they're certainly not starting from ground zero, but as nutrient regulations change, what's not in, fully included in the work they've done to date is how regulations may change, how the bay changes, but also how population growth impacts what we receive as a wastewater facility, how we might expand our purple pipe, and how that might change the availability to dilute RO concentrate in our effluent, and sort of a deeper look at how that would impact our treatment train going forward. And so Amit, maybe add a little bit more science and engineering to that.
Thank you, Carrie. So our bay has, you know, it's been amazingly resilient to nutrient loading. The amount of nutrient that goes in there today, if you compare it to any other estuaries in the country, it is of almost four to five times more than it receives. And it's probably, it's resilient because of the geometry and the water exchange that happens. So the stratification is what we call is extremely low compared to a lot of other bodies. If this happened in the Chesapeake Bay, we would be having impairment and algae bloom every day. So we may be on a delicate scenario. We don't know whether the bay's capacity has peaked. And with the concentration as going down, the dilution might not happen in the Lower South Bay, because Lower South Bay is going to hold the water, it's going to have the longer time order, and then as the salt marshals, you know, going to keep taking it, what they're going to contribute back, it's a very complex chemistry, but we can figure it out. It's just not a quick, you know, we cannot do it in three months. You know, we need to require a lot of monitoring, a lot of numerical modeling, and then, you know, projecting also, as Carrie's mentioned, seventy-five-year agreement. We need to make sure, we need to be able to also adapt to, you know, you know, the increasing load as population grows and changing the regulations. So... I don't know if you answered all the questions, council member.
Got it. Listen, I think I have my own little example of nutrient-rich body of water, and that's Lake Cunningham, where maybe about, I don't know, fifteen years ago, I learned how to kayak on that body of water, and now it's so nutrient-rich, because it doesn't have an outflow, that we don't even want people touching it, right? There's a lot of ducks, and, well, you know, you know this better than I do, Amit. And so I can completely understand when there's too much of an overflow. And had we, had we maybe studied or figured or thought ahead in terms of having a necessary outflow or planning ahead to ensure that that body of water, I'm talking about Lake Cunningham, didn't have, reached this nutrient-rich. And then a lot of our community members who don't have the opportunity to travel outside of San Jose for whatever mobility issues, could use Lake Cunningham in their own backyard. But now I've gone down another rabbit hole, but I see the parallel in this, right? Because, of course, we're talking a much larger body of water, but I would be really interested in learning a little bit more about that Lower South Bay and that impact that you talked about. And maybe we can take this offline. I think for now, I just like to, I think, go back to Carrie. I interrupted this just a little bit. I had asked you to take me down in terms of delineating the difference between the projects. And then I think I heard you say there was some upfront cost or investment from Valley Water, about sixteen million, to Palo Alto. And so my biggest question is going to be, what's our contract? Or what is, what are they proposing to us?
Council member, thank you. We're not at the point that there's an offer in front of us. And, you know, there's a lot of details to work out. So part of the question now is, you know, if Valley Water is open to doing Palo Alto-type deal, we're ready to go. We've been ready to go for thirteen months.
Oh.
If they want a bigger project that includes amending the Silicon Valley Basin Water Purification Center and adding on to that and changing that contract, that's going to take us a lot longer to figure out the details of that. But certainly, we've been ready to go with a Palo Alto-type deal. We think the volume of water we can handle, but we can't handle an unlimited amount. And so, and we likely can't handle it forever. But as in Palo Alto, those are things we would talk about. Once we reach agreement, we would talk about land lease, RO concentrates, et cetera. But we're ready to sign a Palo Alto deal, but anything more complex than that is more complex than that.
Okay. Well, maybe that's the first step, and the step in the right direction in terms of negotiations. I'm not going to say that that's where we're going to vote today, because obviously, we're deferring all of our votes. Or I think the majority of the content here in terms of direction, I think accepting a report is probably appropriate. Is there anything else that, I think, Carrie, you had finished? So I don't know if there's anything that anybody else would like to add.
To the chair, councilor Arenas, I would like to ask for Kirsten Struh to talk a little bit about our views. I think we might see...
Thank you.
Kirsten, if you can chime in, please.
Thank you.
Sure. I think there were two issues I'm going to respond to. One is the sort of deal component. So as I mentioned in my presentation, we have supported San Jose and Santa Clara and its partners with over sixty-five million already. So with Palo Alto, we only took our first step in 2019. And we are offering, we are modeling our financial, you know, proposal to model after the Palo Alto agreement. But because we already have an existing facility, and the impact to ratepayers would be so much lower by expanding it, that's why we're asking for an expanded facility to be part of this. And in terms of the RO concentrate, as I said before, we are not adding anything to the water. It is just more highly concentrated, and our regulators have been extremely supportive. There's actually a provision in the basin plan, which is our regulatory document for water quality regulations, that allows increasing concentration limits if facilities engage in significant water reclamation or water reuse at their facilities. So they're very willing to work with us, because they know that recycled water use is the future. And we have also modeled many, as Carrie said, we have done a lot of modeling already with very worst-case scenarios, much larger facilities than what we are proposing, and there are no issues that we have found.
Okay, got it. And when you say it's not more water, but more highly concentrated water, and we, I'm guessing we have some level or study that would tell us how that would impact the Lower South Bay or whatever receiving body of water?
What we've been modeling is whether the treatment plan can still meet its permit limit. The permit limits are based on protecting the Lower South Bay. And so if our modeling shows that the permit limits can still be met, then it is protective of the South Bay, and we've successfully used this approach over the, you know, since 2014 for the current facility. And we're basically proposing to continue the same. And the Palo Alto agreement also included discharge blended with the wastewater as the preferable option, and that Palo Alto would work with us to make that acceptable to the regulators.
Okay. I did hear you say that because you would be expanding the facility, this might not impact ratepayers in the same way. Is that a commitment you're, you know, you're willing to make in terms of having it within our negotiations? That it would not create the kind of impact that I think I have seen from T-PAC meetings back in my day?
Well, I don't think I can make that kind of commitment.
Right now, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's a half a billion-dollar estimate in terms of the cost of this facility, but we think that it is at least fifty million dollars lower if we go with the expanded facility on the site we are meeting.
I know that there, thank you so much, Kirsten. I know there was an alternative, and I'm trying to read my notes, because I was doing it really quickly. But I think, Carrie, you were talking about the Purple Pipeline, and is that an alternative to having a larger project like this and an investment this way, and maybe getting at the same goal?
Certainly, Valley Water is the water supply expert, but I will say that the City of San Jose and our regional wastewater facility are recycled water experts. And we run the largest recycled water system in the county, producing, Jeff, seventy-five, eighty percent of the recycled water in our county. So we certainly demonstrated our capabilities in that area. And we would like to expand our purple pipe, and we do intend to expand that purple pipe. And I think, you know, that's something that also impacts the ability to dilute the brine from this potential new project. And then I'm going to ask Jeff to talk a little bit about kind of how much money you would need to produce the same amount of recycled water. But I also do want to clarify that, from a wastewater standpoint, highly concentrated is different, so it's not the same to us. And we're forecasting and looking at the regulations to discharge in the bay are changing. So we're trying to ensure that we can meet our permit in the long term. Wastewater is our priority, and as I said, we want to make sure that if Valley Water builds this facility, it is able to run for seventy-five years. But wastewater is our priority, and so if it looks like the brine discharge is impacting our ability to treat wastewater, we would be put in a position to turn it off. And that's not, really not what we want to do. What we have shared is a more expeditious approach for Valley Water would be for them to get their own discharge permit for this facility. Then they would have total control over it, and they could handle the impact to the bay caused by their facility on their own. And certainly, that's a more expensive option, but it would give, it would give Valley Water control, and it would take the regulatory liability off the wastewater facility. So Jeff, talk a little bit about the cost of expanding Purple Pipe and the options as you see it.
All right, great. Thanks, Carrie. Yeah, back in 2014, Valley Water and City of San Jose partnered on a master planning process for recycled water and purified water. That study that we jointly worked on identified that we could expand the recycle water system. For back then, the estimate was around two-hundred-and-fifty million, and that would gain or add about ten thousand acre feet of recycled water, additional recycled water usage in San Jose and the tributary agencies. That is pretty much the equivalent amount that Valley Water is looking at for a purified water project, about the same amount of water. Or back then, the estimate was around two-hundred-and-fifty million. Since that time, Valley Water has done a lot of great work on their countywide water reuse master plan, and they've done a lot of work on modeling on how recycle water expansion could work, both in San Jose, Santa Clara, but also in the northern part of Santa Clara County. And so they have done some significant work on looking at what that might look like. But as I mentioned before, council direction was to negotiate with Valley Water on the expansion of recycled water, and we haven't yet had that opportunity. We've been primarily focused on the purified water aspect of that direction. But we do look forward to picking back up negotiations from a recycle water standpoint to see how we can jointly work together to utilize this type of water supply, which is nonpotable, and it would be used for nonpotable uses, parks, mainly, parks, schools, and those types of uses. I'd also add, too, you know, there's a lot of discussion today on nutrients and its effect on the bay. When you take recycled water and put it on parks, it eliminates that future impact that we've been talking about for the environment. So we are interested absolutely in continuing conversations on recycled water and see it as a possibility of both adding additional water supply, which is a joint interest, I think, to everybody, add the benefit to the community and schools and developments. They also like to take advantage of that type of supply available. And it also helps out with some of the nutrient and environmental impacts that we're looking at in the future in the bay.
Thank you, Jeff. Although I do wonder what would it do to our grass in the parks? I don't know what it would do, but...
A number of other folks that have been waiting to...
Sure. I appreciate the time. I think that I have seen and heard quite a bit, and I think there's some alternatives here in terms of if we want to expand or increase the... And I think there's some alternatives here in terms of if we want to expand or increase the, the amount of water. Um, and, and I, I'd love to see both of these options explored, uh, recycled water. In the same way, um, that we're pursuing the, the, the purified water route. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair, and then I have the mayor after that and a few other council folks.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I, I want to agree somewhat with, uh, what Councilwoman Aranis has said. I don't understand the difference between where this is in the Palo Alto project. The Palo Alto project is a fully baked project with huge definitive agreements. They've been down the regulatory pathway in brine discharge and environmental issues. In fact, um, where they are in the bay is probably more sensitive and they have the same complexity of tributary. And it's even more complicated tributary agencies there because they have East Palo Alto, which is out of the county. And they had Stanford, which is a private entity. They vetted all these issues, so. I think what's happening by more and more study, we're putting our citizens at risk during a drought. We're not employing our folks because this project, uh, has a project labor agreement built into it. And it seems if staff doesn't want to do this project, let's not do this project. But I don't understand why we can't complete this using the same template. Because they've been over the regulatory and the NPS permits and everything like that. And they're a pretty green city themselves. So, um, I mean, if people don't want to do it, let's not do it. I mean, we all have better things, we could use our time in other ways. But we all like to think our cities are different, but here's a set of cities who extensively vetted. And produced all the paperwork and have signed a deal and are ready to get their sixteen million dollars. So they can take the recycled water and turn it into quality that you can use in redwood trees and cooling towers and mountain view. And, um, other uses and generate revenue because they're selling their, uh, recycled water. So, um, that's, that's my comment number one. And number two, with respect to, um, uh, Councilwoman's, another comment of Councilwoman Aranis. And how people are hurting, um, with, uh, water rates and not being able to pay. We actually proposed to the city on September twenty, uh, fourteen, twenty twenty to the mayor and, uh, the, um, city managers, a, uh, retail loan program that I sent to our clerk and I sent, uh, earlier to council person Mahan. That, uh, we did not get a response to, to be able to help folks out. In addition to whatever the city could do ourselves with a long-term loan program with forgiveness. And I don't know if it was rejected or lost in the email, but I do have a copy of that that was sent. So I'd love to relook at that if that's of interest because we know folks are challenged with their payments. And, uh, it was not responded to, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, uh, and, uh, I, I don't actually believe I've ever seen the document that, uh, Vice Chair Kremens referring to, but, uh, you have my cell phone number, so just, uh, text me and call me and we'll be happy to talk. Love to look at it. We are willing to sign the same deal as Palo Alto have signed, that's clear. What, uh, I think is important to recognize is we also are operating a facility, which is the largest on the West Coast. It serves not just our city, but also our partner, City of Santa Clara and many tributary cities as well. And so I guess, you know, I have been a strong advocate for this project, by the way. I think many in the water just remember, uh, back in, in twenty fifteen, when I came into office and, uh, we gathered everybody up over at the advanced water purification plant. So we could, uh, drink the water. I guess now that I'm learning that, uh, we didn't purify all the, the, uh, this, the microplastics now I'm having second thoughts. But anyway, we drank it, uh, and, uh, we stood together to say, this is something we wanted to do. And I agreed with that and, and, and we all wanted to do it. And, uh, you know, I still have the old, uh, Water District, uh, uh, Strategic and Master Planning Report. Uh, and we went to Sacramento and lobbied for money, uh, and this is something we all wanted to do. But, but even in that master trip plan report, I, I just happened to pull it up. And I saw on page six, deck sixty-three, we're very clear about the brine issue, uh, in which we, the city, this is the water district's report. The cities indicate they would not support large discharge quantities of concentrate into its collection system or directly into the recycle water facility. So this has been a longstanding issue, we all recognize that. I guess, uh, the question I have is if the water isn't willing to get its own permit, uh, is, is the water, is Valley Water, uh, willing or interested to indemnify? The cities of San Jose and Santa Clara, if there's a violation of the permit on, in some way, i- is that been discussed?
That's what negotiations are all about.
Well, I just want to know if it's been discussed.
Oh. Has it been discussed?
Eric, it has been, um, it has been discussed and, um, we haven't been able to reach, uh, an agreement where Valley Water was comfortable, um, sharing that responsibility. Part of the challenge is, you know, there's a lot of things that go into wastewater and, and, um, sort of. But we have talked about it, we have talked about cost sharing it, but we haven't been able to reach agreement on it.
Okay. Yeah, look, I, I appreciate their different views about whether this is going to violate, uh, discharge permit requirements or not. And I guess we have a challenge because we have a bit of a dynamic situation with regulatory authorities apparently, uh, interested in moving the bar. Uh, and if that happens, obviously that creates greater constraints for us. But we have a different set of responsibilities in Palo Alto, we're serving many, many more people. With a facility that's undergoing a one point four billion dollar retrofit. And we are trying to do the best we can to ensure that we are also good stewards of the environment. And what we do with the largest, uh, facility in the West Coast is going to have very significant impacts in the bay. And I, I think it is absolutely worth, uh, our effort to make sure we're doing no harm. So anyway, I look forward to, to working through these issues. I think we can work through them, uh, but, uh, we, we've got to at least acknowledge the fact that these issues are very real and they can't simply be overlooked.
Is the council member that?
Councilmember Jimenez.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Can you hear me just fine?
Yes.
So, so the, I, I just have a few comments, but first I have a question for, and this is for our city manager, Dave Sykes. Dave, you know, th- this direction, uh, to negotiate with Valley Water was given in September, correct? I think it's the memo September, I don't have it in front of me, but in September twenty twenty sometime. So I'm curious, uh, you know, as it relates to some of what we recently went through at the city, as it relates to, um, priority setting and things of that nature, h- how, how do you, as a, how do we as a city sort of prioritize this? Given that the direction was given September twenty twenty, but we just recently went through the different priority setting process.
Yeah, well, thanks, Councilmember, for the question. You know, I think, um, you know, the, the priority setting process and the roadmap process that we just went through, as you know, um, really focused on, on our enterprise priorities. There are, there are many other issues that we are, we're working on that, that, that don't always rise to that level. And, and this is one, to be honest. It doesn't mean it's not important. It just means that, you know, we're, it doesn't really, uh, rise to the, the, uh, uh, enterprise level across the entire organization. And so that, you know, that, that contributes to, to the issue. I think, um, you know, I, I don't need to talk about the pandemic, we've all been through it and, and we all know the stresses that it's created on our organizations. And we're still going through that. You know, I think the, uh, an example, we, we don't, we didn't really talk about on the roadmap very much, the, the one point four billion dollar, uh, planned, uh, renovation. So we've got a lot of things going on that don't necessarily go on the roadmap. I, I don't know if that answers your question.
Sort of, I mean, I, I guess, I guess what I'm curious about, obviously, um, a common theme in many of the things we talk about at the city is the, the stressors on staff. And obviously, you know, EOC work and COVID response, all that, which is super important, very relevant, and, and I, I understand it. Uh, I guess I'm curious, ha- has, has that impacted, I mean, because of all that? Has it really created a, a sort of space where we as a city have been unable to, to devote as much time and energy to these negotiations? Or, or have the negotiations been impacted because of the pandemic, I guess, is what I'm wondering?
Yeah, and I'll let Carrie, I mean, I, I think we've been at the table though, pretty, pretty good. And I, I think, um, I think, you know, I think Rick knows that. We, we've been sincere about kind of trying to, to figure this out. You know, I think, but we are also at a point where, where we need a pretty straightforward approach here. That we just don't have the capacity to, to, you know, devote and, and divert a lot of resources to, to this. Um, and so that's what you, what you're hearing from us. It's, it's not, it's not that we don't want to partner, it's not that we don't want this project to go forward. I, I hope you can hear it in my voice, we just are at our max. And so if it's not straightforward, we just don't have the capacity.
Did care, I don't know if Carrie, thank you for that, Dave. I don't know if Carrie wanted to say anything, but, uh, because I, I saw her. If there's any, you're on mute, Carrie. If there's anything great, if not, that's okay, I can't, no? Okay. All right, uh, so, so listen, I mean, during this, the course of this meeting, um, I guess for me, what's become, what seems to have arisen for me is that I almost feel like, uh, the electeds in the room are, are being called upon to be mediators of sorts. That there, uh, it's evident to me that there's, uh, some, uh, miscommunication or, or, uh, just folks aren't understanding each other. We're talking past each other. I understand, you know, I didn't, how can I put this? I, I, I thought it was interesting that the, 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 the audio being played of Carrie at the beginning of the meeting. As I'm sure other folks thought, uh, thought of that as well. And, and so, but I also understand and, and can imagine that maybe some of that's born out of frustration. Uh, whether it's well placed or not, I don't know, but, uh, that's what I suspect. So with all that being said, I, I think, uh, you know, I know we're diverting or, or, uh, not moving forward the memo put out by the vice mayor. But, uh, the components, uh, within that memo that really stand out to me that are, I think of, of most importance is really the executive, uh, negotiating team. Because I, I think, uh, in my mind at least, uh, thinking of it very, um, high level, that i- if staffs from the Wal- Valley Water and from the city just aren't connecting properly, I, I think i- i- it may be, um, well to have other folks in the room to try to understand this and try to figure out a path forward. And so, uh, I also appreciate the comments from, uh, Director Kremen in that, listen, if we're going to do this, let's do this. If we're not, don't move on, right? And, and, uh, and so I'm very much interested in really vetting this out, uh, to the extent possible, you know, trying to do, do things, uh, i- in which it's, uh, within the timeline, again, if possible, that what Valley Water has. But also obviously they're being very thoughtful to the impacts in the city. And so, um, I look forward to some of this information coming back. Uh, I, I think Vice Mayor, you said it, it was going to come, you, you thought this memo and this discussion maybe in closed session or some in public session, uh, was going to come back in about two weeks or so? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, all right, yeah. I look forward to that, uh, conversation. And, and one thing I would say to city staff is, I know during the course of the presentation, there was a particular slide, I think it was sixteen of sixteen, where we, uh, city staff touched on next steps and you just sort of a litany of things that we need to, that, that are, are next steps within the negotiation of an agreement. Obviously, looking at the list, it seems like a lot of stuff, a lot of complicated stuff, and I don't pretend to understand it all. But what I would like to understand, as an example, when you, when staff comes back to the, to the city council is, uh, on that slide sixteen, there's a list of things. And one of them, for example, is negotiate or revise the operations agreement. Or, you know, there's different things like that. I'd like to know, like, some of these revisions to some of these agreements, is it, is it a matter of changing a word here and there? Is it a massive overhaul, right? Because based on the list, it makes it seem like it's just this overwhelming amount of work. But I don't know if that's the case, right? And I want to better understand that because I, I think we need clarity as we move forward in these negotiations. Because if we don't have it, I think it's going to continue to perpetuate sort of this talking past each other. And quite frankly, I'm not interested in having these type of conversations, they, they just go nowhere. Uh, it just becomes a public sort of vetting ground to, to vet some of these grievances. And I don't think it's very productive. And so I, I really do hope that, uh, as we move forward, we're moving forward more purposefully. And again, when an executive management team, it may be some council members and Valley Water directors on there, I think can help potentially facilitate some of these conversations. So we're looking forward to, 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 to that time, thank you.
Thank you, I have Director Keegan, and then I have Councilman Paralis after that.
Thank you very much. I'd, I'd really like to express my appreciation to, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Chappie Jones and council members, um, Aranis and Jimenez for, for their input and comments. Great points and I, I really appreciate them. You know, I, um, am a longtime San Jose resident and I also spent nineteen years working for the city of San Jose. And I certainly understand the financial constraints that San Jose operates under. Even in good times, San Jose has stretched then. And right now, we have not been going through good times. So I understand the, the sensitivity in terms of, um, uh, staff levels and, um, what San Jose's internal priorities are. Uh, one of the things, it seems to me, reading between the lines, there's almost, um, an implication that, that perhaps, um, San Jose may need some, uh, assistance in terms of meeting the, the, you know, financial demands of having, uh, appropriate staff levels to engage in this. That's certainly something I think that could be discussed in terms of negotiations, if, if that is indeed the, the roadblock to moving forward. I would just like to point out one thing that Councilmember Aranis said, and I am sensitive to this as well, because I hear from it from my constituents. Which is, um, trying to keep water rates as low as we possibly can. And I think that as we move forward in negotiations, you know, that's something that needs to be in our mind. When, um, you know, one of the things that Ms. Romano said was that, um, if we were to get our own discharge outlet, that would be cleaner from their perspective, but that's more expensive. And so I think jointly, we need to be looking at what are the options, uh, that can be considered? That, and, and both parties be committed to ultimately, it's our water consumers that are paying the costs of these. And so, uh, adding any additional cost, we should be looking for what's the most cost effective option? Because it's going to be impacting all of our constituents. Uh, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Paralis, and then I have Councilmember Mahan after that.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, uh, Director Keegan on, on that last one. I think that is something worth noting, although two different, uh, agencies here, we serve, um, the same constituencies. And, um, and I think certainly we've heard that time and again, uh, that, that not only is there confusion in regards to where different lines are drawn. But the reality is, is that I think, uh, at the end of the day, our constituencies don't necessarily care about the individual differences that we may have on, uh, some of these challenges. They just want to see that we get to solutions that are best for them. And, you know, and we are included in that because we, you know, also as, as, uh, whether we're, we remain with these agencies in elected roles or staff roles or not. Um, you know, the majority of us, we, we live within the, within these areas and, and so we're also benefactors. And we also end up paying for it, for the services. And so, uh, we serve, uh, and wear multiple hats. And, and I do think, you know, in that spirit, certainly of collaboration is, is, is where I feel we, we have to work together. It's not really an option, um, it, it is an obligation. And, uh, I, I would say that, you know, I, I wanted clarification, but I think Councilmember Jimenez got it in regards to the next steps for, for us as a council in regards to our vice mayor's suggestion. Um, I know that, that the one part of, of Carrie's memo, uh, that I did not necessarily like was just option two, right? Differing the negotiations recommended Valley Water proceed with the Palo Alto Mountain View project. And the only reason is, is similarly to what our mayor described, um, I too have been, um, a champion and, and very interested in San Jose being a partner and, 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 and having this plant. Uh, I didn't drink the, the water with the mayor, uh, on that day, uh, but would be happy to moving forward, uh, as a continued sign of, of confidence.
It's not a requirement.
And, um, but I really do think it is, this, this has multiple benefits for, uh, for our city specifically as well. And, and so I, I look forward to the conversation, uh, over the next couple of weeks with, uh, our council. And I, and I do think the suggestions from the vice mayor in regards to trying to see how we can get, um, a- at an executive level of negotiations. I think that potentially could help, uh, I don't think it could hurt. And so, uh, I would support that, that as well. Those are my comments, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahan?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I too would like to see us find a way to move forward together. I think, I think this project potentially has a tremendous amount of merit. I think, I think this project potentially has a tremendous amount of merit over the long haul. And I'm, I told Director Lazzard, I'm, I'm also very ready to go out and drink a glass of this purified water. So I'm, you know, at least, at least in, in conceptually very supportive. I, I wanted to just dig in a little deeper on one issue that we've, we've, I think is a real sticking point for our staff, from what I've heard today. And I know is a very real concern across all of our priorities, which is just staff capacity. And I, I think it's related to what Director Keegan mentioned in her initial comment. It would be helpful to hear from our staff a little more about the nature of the constraints we face and whether or not additional upfront, some upfront funding would alleviate that pressure or not. And I, and I say this with the realization that sometimes, you, you know, money helps and it gives you more capacity. You can, you can basically buy more capacity in some form. Consultants or whatnot, or hiring more staff. Sometimes the nature of the problem is such that the, the expertise you have, you know, it's a team, it's got to work together. There's, there's some core functions that just can't be easily ramped up. So can, I don't know if this is for, is probably for Carrie. Does some upfront funding, wherever it came from? I don't want to try to negotiate the agreement here. But how much does additional funding allow you the capacity to work through some of these problems on a faster timeline? Or is that not really the nature of the, the constraint? And Carrie, you're muted.
Apparently pressing the spacebar doesn't always work. So thank you. And, you know, Valley Water has been paying for staff time to, to do these negotiations. Because it's not a wastewater project, Prop 218 doesn't allow us to use wastewater funded staff for these types of negotiations. But, you know, if we had more money, it certainly allows us to put more people on it. The challenge is, as, as Amit presented, our team is really already overextended. And when we did our rate forecast for this next year, we didn't add additional staff to, to do this type of work. But obviously, having said that, you know, we are all trying to resolve this. So, so one idea which I'm just going to throw out there for us to think about is maybe there's a way to, to use some Valley Water funding and say, thank you, Director Keegan, for suggesting that, to, to bring in a third party facilitator. So maybe there's a way to, to start at this a different way. But it's got to be, we've got to have, you know, a limited amount of time per week. I, I just don't have four to five hours every week to put on this. And, but, but certainly, you know, we can maybe figure out a, a project timeline and say, we're going to start here and we're going to end here. And this is, this is, we're either going to get there or we're not. Because I think part of the frustration you're hearing from, from all of us is we've been at this a long time and we're no further along. But again, you know, we're happy to sign a Palo Alto deal today. Start work on, on can we and should we? Is it in the best interest of everyone to adjust the, the existing integration agreement? The existing facility is serving the exact purpose it was intended to for both parties. So, so we have to understand if, what changing it, what impacts that changing it would cause for both parties.
Okay, so just to repeat back what I think I heard. There are legal, environmental, and probably other technical issues we would have to work through before we were comfortable to move forward. Additional funding at this point could allow for some expanded capacity to work through those issues faster, but sounded like you hedged a little there, not, not too much faster?
I mean, as example, our, our attorneys are already busy. So I don't, and I'll, you know, I don't know if Nora has an opinion on whether or not extra money would help Rosa review things any faster.
Okay. Is Nora on? This can also be a, a line of inquiry we can pursue in two weeks when we come back to council. I just, I wanted to throw that out. That just seems to me like maybe at the crux of the issue here of whether or not we can move forward. But let me, okay, I'll leave it at that. Thanks, Carrie.
But we, we obviously have been willing to consider that and continue that. I have Councilman Cohen, and then Director Lazzard, and there's another council person there, so got a list.
Hi, thank you. I think this is a quick question, because I think Carrie just answered it. But the, as, as Vice Chair Kremen said, there's a deal with Palo Alto in place. And Palo Alto seems to, that deal was probably predicated on everybody agreeing that the technical issues are solvable and that, that, that the technical environmental questions are answered. But San Jose has a different take on whether we've answered those issues. And I think, I hear there's, there's, there's the, the technical environmental issue that we still want to be more comfortable with. And is that maybe because we're a little less comfortable with the analysis than Palo Alto is? And then also the, the, I guess there's the legal question. Because we're changing an existing facility, there's some other considerations that Palo Alto doesn't have. And I just want to understand, maybe Carrie, can we understand? What are the, the differences? What is it about the deal that we, that we're still, that we're more, have more to hang up on than Palo Alto?
Councilmember, thank you. No, we're, we're, we've been ready for 13 months to sign a deal in the exact framework of Palo Alto. There are no concerns or reservations around that. And Jeff, I'm going to ask you to elaborate a little bit on that.
Thank you. It's a, it's maybe a 15-page legal contract, Councilmember, but I'll, I'll narrow it down into just two points. It was a reservation of wastewater rights of about, of about nine million gallons a day, or an option to, to use nine million gallons a day of wastewater in exchange for financial compensation. There are other terms in there. There's a, there's a potential long-term water supply component. There's an agreement that they will work together on, on solutions regarding RO concentrate. But none of the, none of the other terms were included in there. It really was a reservation of wastewater rights. And that, I think, is what we're saying that we could do. And we had entered into negotiations, I believe, several months ago with the intent of, of, of doing just that of Valley Water walking away with another option to buy nine million gallons a day of wastewater from us. And they would also would then have that same option with Palo Alto and Mountain View. And that is what we were working towards right now. And Valley Water could maybe provide more context. They are currently negotiating, again, with Palo Alto on adding other components, additional components to that agreement, or a new agreement, I should say, and working on a land lease, where, where to put a facility for a Palo Alto style option. They have expressed, of course, and I think it was mentioned before, not only to do a Palo Alto style agreement with us, but to add land, RO concentrate, go back and revise our existing agreement, the integration agreement, we're terming it, in order to do a more cohesive package with us at, at one time. So the, and I think what Carrie is saying is that we are, are good with focusing just on the Palo Alto and Mountain View cell agreement, which again is a reservation of wastewater rights to Valley Water. They would have that in their hand. One of the next steps we've also offered then would be, once we complete that, perhaps we could then move into the land lease agreement. This would be setting aside the land. And then that, at that point, Valley Water would have two agreements in hand, a reservation to buy wastewater of nine MGDs and the land. And then we could work into a much more, a much more difficult and lengthy conversation that would be revising our existing integration agreement. I'll provide just maybe a little bit of context, because there are some questions on how is their discussions with us a little bit different than, than just with Palo Alto? This 2010 integration agreement, there was a meeting back in January, and there was a consensus to talk about revising three terms of that. One, to allow the existing facility to have blended use. And the second one was to revise the, some of the termination clauses in there that are more in favor of San Jose and less favorable to Valley Water. That was an interest in, in Valley Water and pursuing that discussion. And then the third one, there's a revenue sharing component that goes along with that agreement. And we then said, well, let's, let's look at changing that at the same time. To really revising three different aspects. That integration agreement, like, like most agreements, it, it's pretty complex. And if we look at it as a whole, it's a very, it's a very balanced and level agreement. Once we start looking at each individual, there are some that benefit Valley Water to our lack of benefit. And there's some that benefit us to, that don't, that don't benefit them. And so once we open up that agreement, I think staff's concern is that it becomes Pandora's box. Because if you start looking at all the terms individually, some don't make sense for either side. And we also have an interest of opening up that agreement to modify the terms that aren't beneficial to us. So there, there is that joint consensus, like, hey, let's go back in that and maybe revise it. The concern with staff's timeline, Valley Water's timeline, is that opening up that agreement alone will take a considerable, a considerable amount of time. It'd be easier if we can really just define it on the three items. But once we start really diving into it, it's really going to be completely pulling it apart and figuring out a better way of moving forward. And that, that will take time.
So Councilmember, if I could, if I could just summarize. So, you know, we feel like the, the sort of line has moved a bit. So in Palo Alto, it was, as Jeff said, reservation of some rights, then work on the details. We feel like for San Jose, they want to work out the details first and then talk about reserving rights and money exchange and all that. And that's not really what we embarked on. And, and it's not the same level of effort. And, and it's not the same timeline. So we like the Palo Alto agreement, we reviewed it. We're, we've been ready to go for 13 months. So I just want to be clear that, that, you know, the regional wastewater facility is not saying no to the Palo Alto deal. We, we've been saying yes for 13 months.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
I, I wanted to ask Melanie Richardson to respond, because I think, again, we may see this slightly differently.
Thank you, CEO Calendar. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a little bit the difference between the Palo Alto and the San Jose agreement. We have had an ongoing existing relationship with San Jose for many years. As you know, we're already partners in the Silicon Valley Advanced Purification Center. And we've already contributed about $65 million to, to this project. In Palo Alto, this is the beginning of a new relationship. They were on their, they were beginning their own recycled water program. And we simply entered into an agreement to reserve rights to be able to partner with them on that agreement. We have different starting points with San Jose and Palo Alto. They're really not comparable. So in Palo Alto, it's true, we are still continuing to work through the RO concentrate and the land lease agreements. We're doing the same with San Jose. But we don't have to start and go back to the beginning and develop an initial relationship. So I wanted to ask Kirsten if she has anything to add to that. But all three pieces, the water rights, the RO concentrate, and the land lease all have to be in place for us to move forward with this type of agreement, either with Palo Alto, Palo Alto or San Jose. So just forming a Palo Alto style agreement, as it's being discussed, really doesn't help us or get us anywhere with San Jose. So I'm going to ask Kirsten to kind of expand on that a little bit.
Thank you, Melanie. Yes, as Melanie said, we already have the agreement with Palo Alto, and we already have an agreement with San Jose. The real cost savings to our mutual ratepayers is by expanding the existing facility in San Jose. If we're doing a standalone facility or, you know, in Palo Alto or San Jose, that doesn't really help our ratepayers in the long run. And as we mentioned before, we are already actively working with Palo Alto on the land lease and the RO concentrate management to meet our timeline. So as we are, you know, heading into another drought, we want to be ready to have this project go out to bid this year.
Thank you. I, thanks for the clarification. All that makes a lot of sense to me. The, and, and as we, and I think, I think many of us are expressing that we'd like to come to a deal. And because I think it's better for our ratepayers to do it in San Jose than start something new in Palo Alto. So I think ultimately, we'd like to get there. So one of the questions now is timeline, obviously. You know, the timeline was you want to have an agreement in place by June. What is your ultimate deadline? If we have, if it takes it longer for us to get there, how long can it take for us to still, for you to feel like we can move forward?
I will defer to our board members. Their direction has been to implement as soon as feasible and have a procurement this year.
Well, if we are pursuing a P3, we, we have a specific timeline that we're trying to follow. We've got an RFP that we're developing that we're putting out pretty soon. And so we, we're trying to, we're trying to get that working together. And that's, that's what this is all about. We hope to have a P3 on board so they could help us with siding and so on. So part of the P3 is to, to plan, develop, finance, build, and, and operate. So that means they need to be on the ground floor. So that's why we're trying to coordinate all of this together. That's, that's, that's what our schedule is. We've waited a long time for moving on this. And so it's, it's a question of, of getting this moving to hit our target in our master, in my, in our master planning that we've done now for a number of years. That's who we're expecting. And of course, you know, we have a lot of pressure with the kind of funding that's now available and will soon be expanded to the federal government with, with hopefully more, more funding from the present administration for infrastructure funding that might come up. So it, it's a question of trying to fit all this in the same timeline. Let me, let me call on Director Lazzard, because she's been waiting. Then we have another council person that's, Councilmember Cohen, are you, are you, are you done?
Yeah, I mean, just, just to wrap up and say that, you know, I, I look forward to the conversation in a couple of weeks with our council. And I, I, I do support some of the, the direction that Councilmember Jones has, has put out in his memo. And we'll be, I think there's many of us who would be happy to participate in some way to bring, to bring a better team or a bigger team to the, to, to help try to get this resolved. So this has been a great conversation today. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, sir. Director Lazzard? Is that on mute?
Director Lazzard, you're on mute.
Thank you. First, a couple of comments and then a question for Dave Sykes. I, I really appreciate the questions and the thoughtfulness of the inquiry from the, the council members. And it's, it's really heartwarming to see that they're engaged and, and want to see something move forward. I think that's, that's really, really important. I do think that we're kind of talking past one another. And it may be that, that some sort of mediation is going to be required or a third party to, to help, you know, solve the differences between, you know, what we're looking at from a Palo Alto agreement and what the city of San Jose is looking at from the Palo Alto agreement. So I, I, I think, you know, we're, we're probably at a stalemate there. And in order to break that logjam, I don't know whether it's involving the electeds or whether it's involving a, a third party to kind of sit in and hash it out. The question for Dave Sykes, and I think it may have been answered by Carrie and I think it was Jeff. You, you've said multiple times that if it's just a straightforward sort of process, that you have the resources to, to move forward with that, you're ready to go. But if it's anything beyond that, that it's, there, there's no bandwidth either with employees or, or funding. And so what, what is the straightforward process you're talking about? Is it just doing the Palo Alto style agreement and putting all the other things that, that were talked about to another day? I don't want to assume that I understood what you were meaning by that term.
Yeah, thank you, Director Lazzard. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what I meant. And, you know, and I think your comments earlier, I, yeah. I mean, I just, I think we heard, just heard what Melanie and Kirsten said. So I think, you know, it doesn't sound like a Palo Alto deal really works for, for Valley Water. And, and that's, I think, what our direction has been from our council. And, and as you can hear from us, that's what we've been advocating is, is this kind of straightforward, you know, straight, easy thing to do. So yeah, we're, we've got some work ahead of us, I would say.
Thank you.
Councilmembers Barza, then I have a couple of directors.
Thank you. I, I'll be quick. I just wanted to make a comment. Because, again, the goal of today is really to, to have this kind of discussion. I wanted to thank Vice Mayor Jones for his leadership and, and express my desire as well to move forward on this. And, and I, I am optimistic that through our partnership that we can come together and come to a deal. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Santos?
Yes. It is good morning. It's been a long time. I'm getting dry mouth. But the most important, it's an Albezo. Let's keep it. You're supposed to laugh a little bit, but you're not. But let me go back a little bit. Uh, I thought that, uh, Councilmember Jimenez had us some good suggestions, among others. I thought I knew a lot, and then all of a sudden I listened to this meeting for the last couple of hours. I've learned a lot more. Uh, when it comes to the city manager of San Jose, Mr. Sykes, I have the ultimate respect because I've had a set with him many times on different issues in the community. He's always listed and being a very fair man. Of course, I work with Rick Calendar all the time and he's the utmost. I really believe that, um, what, uh, Vice Mayor Jones said, you know, I'll come back in a couple of weeks. I think we need to give the opportunity to Chair Estamira and Vice Chair Jones. I've had some brief conversations in the past with Vice Mayor Jones. It's been very beneficial. I, I really appreciate his enthusiasm and so on. And so obviously, there's some impasse, and I believe that Tony and the Vice Mayor and the staffs can get together in a couple of weeks. I think they can resolve many of these little, what we call may, might be nitpicking, might be real serious issues that could be resolved. I think we should give it at that time. I've listened to everybody over this last two hours. I think we're just going to go around in circles, but I believe they, with their leadership and the staff working together and them overseeing it, as Mr. Jimenez basically said, I think it'll be beneficial. Thank you.
Have Director Kremen, followed by Director Varela?
Yeah, I'll make it quick. I mean, you know, going back to the situation with Palo Alto, there was longstanding, um, feuding, and it was on multiple levels before this agreement. It settled, you know, we're talking about how narrow to make any discussions. There were a lot of issues over state water tax, other issues that had the two government entities close to the litigation. And we were able to sit down and kind of not just solve the narrow issue, but all the issues in the agreement. So I think if we, maybe the suggestion of Director Estamira and, uh, Vice Mayor Jones is the way to go because that's how we did it there, which is kind of took all the issues to the table and empowered two people to come up with a draft agreement subject to everyone, you know, subject to council and district approval, and solved issues going back 20 years involving water. So I think it could be done. I don't think we should be negative about it. I think it's positive. It might even be faster than mediation.
Director Varela?
Thank you, Chair Estamira. So I'd like to put my lens on a different approach on what we're talking about. And let's take a look at the global picture, what's, what we're all experiencing today. And I want to talk a little bit about climate change and the impacts that we're experiencing locally from that phenomenon. We're experiencing sea level rise in the Delta. We're also experiencing our snowpack in the Sierras diminishing. We are fortunate to have, uh, above-ground storage up and down the state that we could depend on through our water needs here in Santa Clara County, which we import. We import 55% of the water that you enjoy every day from that source. But we must continue to have these discussions and look towards what we at the Valley Water District talk about, a sustainable future water supply, and that's recycling and water purification. And of course, we throw into that continued conservation levels. So I think it's important that we continue to have these discussions, but we really need to look at some of the other issues that are impacting our region and up and down the state and our nation. We have toxicity issues. When we look at what has recently occurred in Flint, Michigan, and the city's responsibility that they're now taking for that, what happened recently in the state of Texas and other regions where water is tainted and impacted, and we have locally what we consider disadvantaged communities, mostly in the central part of the state, and these are farmworker communities, when their water issues are also very toxic. So when we're talking about our constituents and our mutual representation here in Silicon Valley, in which we are very fortunate, when you turn the tap at your, uh, at your home or your business, and you pour that glass of water and you drink it, you don't have any second thoughts about it, none whatsoever, because it's treated, it's safe, it's clean. So the discussions that we are having today is all what we're going to be talking about for our future. Clean, safe drinking water, the sustainability of that, water purification, and, and, uh, recycling. So I just want to put that into our thought process as we're talking about this. And currently, our rates are low. We did not have a rate increase in the last cycle, recycle period of rate increases. And so, and the Water District is currently negotiating this year whether or not we're going to hold those rates or increase them. And so that, that's what the Water District is discussing currently. So I just wanted to share those thoughts with you this morning.
Thank you. I see, uh, no other requests?
We have a member of the public.
We have a member of the public that might have the answers for us. Do we have a name or?
The member of the public that's requesting to speak that's on the phone with the last three numbers. Oh, I got two members now, with the last three numbers, 1, 4, 0. Go ahead. You can, you're unmuted?
Yes. Good morning.
Star, star six, unmute yourself? Are you? Are you able to unmute yourself and speak?
Yeah, uh, time, time to figure out how, how to work the water system, guys. You know, purifying, you know, you want to purify it, get rid of the fluoride, find out which waterways are which. And when, when I hear that your staff is stressed or a stressed staff, I got the world's smiles file in for that after all the rates and taxes and fees I pay on my water bill. You guys are stressed? You know what's stressful is when you guys make, when you guys do a, a billing error. That's become stressful when a water bill's like thousands of dollars. Happened to my friends over in the Los Gatos, Saratoga area. I hope you guys aren't going to be doing that anymore, or whoever did it. But you guys should all be ashamed of yourselves. This is basic water infrastructure. It, it shouldn't even be a discussion because it should already be done already, but it's not. I mean, you guys had to change your name because, I don't know, you were ashamed of what the name was, or maybe the city of Santa Clara and the county didn't want to be affiliated with you people. I could imagine why. You guys are a disaster. Should be ashamed of yourselves, and you guys need to sharpen your pencils, work with mu- what money you can, and figure out how we can have clean water in one of the richest places on earth. But you don't pay, you, you don't care. You want to just build a brand-new, uh, building and extra wings to it. Make sure there's plenty of solar panels on, on the carports. That's what you guys are worried about. You're not worried about the ratepayers. You're not worried about the safety of the water. You just want more money because it's a cash cow. Hey, you know what the mafia is in charge of at this day in Sicily? The water. Oh, and the garbage. So, yeah, that's what, that's what you guys like. It's like a mafia. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves. Start sharpening some pencils and get back to basic infrastructure. Thank you.
Next.
Next, we have, uh, B. Beekman.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Hi, thank you. Blair Beekman, uh, here, Blair Beekman. Um, thank you for the meeting today. I was a bit late. Uh, I had other things to do this morning. So I will review this meeting, but, um, I came in, uh, about the last 45 minutes, and I did not hear much talk about, um, rate, uh, purposes. What will happen with, with all your talk of, uh, recycling, uh, water issues and purification? Uh, what, what exactly will be the rate issues that you'll be considering? I know San Jose Water is having, going to be having serious issues of rate increases. You sound like yourselves, you don't quite know what to do. Um, yeah, uh, you know, I think there's a real interest in the concept of subsidies right now. And I, I hope that can learn to be a conversation, that can be an open conversation, and it's something that's workable and that it can really help support lower-income persons while upper-income persons can pay a higher amount, basically. I mean, that's the, the strategy behind it. And, you know, we're, we're kind of living in, in a two-tiered world right now. I don't know if it's, the subsidies is the answer for long-term use. But, you know, East Bay Community Energy, uh, local San Jose Community Energy, possibly their garbage department and the water department, they'll all probably be considering the ideas of, of subsidy and how that can be of help. And, and, and I hope that subject isn't a taboo subject to talk about and make clear its options for low-income people. I mean, don't, don't make it difficult for people to understand the subject if you do choose that route to work. And that's kind of my focus and, and point and emphasis. I'm also interested how, you know, local agencies themselves, uh, you know, can become in charge of these subsidy programs instead of having to work with, say, the CPUC or PG&E. And, um, that's of interest. That's an idea. So consider all the options around subsidy programs and just making an open, shared process, uh, you know, that can really help low-income people while upper-income people can, can pay a higher bill. And, uh, so good luck in, in how to work on that, and, uh, I guess that's all I have to say. I hope, thanks for your patience with my words and my inexperience and lack of knowledge, and hopefully it can be of help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beekman. We do have a number of public meetings that, uh, where we will be considering our water rates. Uh, and I direct you over to, uh, valleywater.org, which is our website so that, uh, you can see, uh, when those public hearings are. Uh, we, we will have many of them all the way through up through May.
I have, I have two more members of the public.
Two more members of the public, yes.
Mr. Daniel Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, yeah, you spoke.
Thank you. Uh, the discussion that I heard, and that was on and off because I'm taking care of my mother that has Alzheimer's, and she's 103, so forgive me for that. Uh, it reminds me when I represented a company that did co-generation in Latin America. Uh, it was going to be a pro- project of $100 million, and the return of investment was going to be in five years. The company, the energy company was going to save two cents for, for every kilowatt. Uh, it seems similar to what you people are doing in Palo Alto with, uh, San Jose. I didn't hear any discussions as to how long it's going to take for your, uh, return of investment is going to take. And then you will be filthy rich at the expense of, uh, San Jose's residents. I think you have to be clear as water, and I hope we're not polluted. So when you speak, speak the truth in all senses of the word. There is recycling, conservation, environment contamination that has to be addressed as well from our point of view as citizens, because we don't value what is the essence of life, and that is water. So discussions have to be made out in the open with no hidden agenda as to what is it that impels you to propose your, what you're putting on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. You're quite right. We, we're speaking on a global, in a global aspect of, um, policymaking. Uh, but we will be very detailed and very public, uh, as we go forward. Uh, next person?
We have a Mr. Scott Largent.
Mr. Largent?
Mr. Largent, you're unmuted.
Great. Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, Scott Largent. I'm starting to get a little, oh, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, great. Thank you, everybody. Uh, I'm, I'm starting to get a little more familiar. My name is Scott Largent, and I'm trying to get more familiar with the water companies, uh, meetings, kind of policies, kind of how the whole gig works. Um, I participate a lot in county and city government, and I want to just kind of understand, um, in a way, why the right hand's not talking to the left hand as far as homeless sweeps and, um, you know, providing adequate care for the people that are living in our creeks, living on our streets. I am currently homeless, and I stay in a motorhome out on Spring Street. As we start to reopen more in Santa Clara County, um, as you guys have to start cleaning up the creeks and getting the severely mentally ill meth addicts kind of out of there in a way, they are going to start to flood into the crash zone in different areas. We understand that's going to happen. Um, what I'm starting to wonder is why we haven't set up something like a FEMA camp? Why we have not started to provide, I know we do our little tiny homes things and they take years to roll out. Um, we need something on an emergency basis immediately. And by putting something in place like this, we would stop people from tapping into every single power pole that runs up and down the Guadalupe, um, the same thing with tapping into water lines. Um, we just need to get these people more organized out here. I'm trying to do my part of just making sure my neighbors out here keep their areas clean. Uh, but this is just going to blow up in our face right now. Um, last night, there was a major fire out here, a, several RVs caught on fire. It was very sad to watch. Now, I'm not trying to throw these people under the bus, but if it was more organized and we distanced some of these RVs by five to six feet, we made sure the propane tanks weren't stacked out there, um, we would prevent this stuff from happening. And a lot of the people that I'm interacting with just didn't learn about a lot of this stuff growing up. I went to Kennel and Camp, Rich Kid Camp, and we learned about fires. We learned about clearing the areas around there. We learned about how to handle a firearm, how to, uh, store ammunition properly. I mean, there's all these things that I had the ability to learn that people out on the street know nothing about. Um, can we teach people out here how to survive properly? And when will the city and the Water District start trying to do more? I think we can organize this out here, weed out the bad apples, and all these people have to get out of the creek. We have to start giving them drug treatment, mental health services. And the stuff that I'm seeing in your creeks is, is, it's third-world country conditions. These people need some serious care, and a lot of them do need to be institutionalized. And I, I just worry. I worry, I worry, I worry. So I, I appreciate the time to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that it?
We have, uh, Mr. Wesley Lee.
Mr. Weed?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you for taking my call. I've been waiting very patiently since 9:00 AM. And so I really wanted to talk about, hopefully I'm, I'm knowing, they jump in the gun about, uh, rate increases. But, um, you know, I'm, as a resident of District 8, I'm really opposed to these rate increases, particularly now with COVID-19, and there's people struggling right now with financially. And this could be, you know, one of the things that breaks the proverbial, um, you know, camel's back. Um, besides that, though, I mean, these things seem to be happening every year, almost every year, and they seem to be far and beyond the rate of, I'd say, you know, inflation rates. You know, I, last year, the inflation rate was like 1.23%, and previous to that was 2.3%. And so the average person living, I would think that that's a cost of living expense increase. And I think that the water rate should be commensurate with these nation increases or the cost of, of Consumer Price Index increases. Because if they are going far beyond that, I've heard that to me, one increase the, the rates to 10%. That means that the, the water is going to cost proportionally more than all the other expenses that we already are burdened with. And, you know, I, I think that there should be some responsibility in terms of how the finances are managed. I mean, manage it in the way that you manage your own pocketbook, you know, not manage in the way that you're managing other people's money. I mean, um, if something doesn't need to be done, don't do it. Um, or maybe it's not cost-effective. Maybe there's better ways of doing that. I think that you should look at ways of doing things, or maybe you look at things that not, don't need to be done. You know, you know, you talk about this water purification thing, just been hearing for the first time. Maybe there are more cost-effective ways, or maybe there's cheaper ways of doing that. So that should be carefully considered. Um, the last thing I would just want to mention is, you know, you know, I don't know how much transparency there is in terms of justifying these, these cost increases. If it's 10%, you know, I would like to know why it is 10%. You know, are you guys managing your expenses such that you need a 10% increase? I mean, if you're in a private, um, company, private sector, you'd have to go before a certain board and say, okay, you know, we need these expenses and you need to justify these expenses. So, um, you know, I'd like for you as whoever it may be, the Water Board, whoever, to justify these rate increases. I, I think it's important to have the faith of the public to, you know, say, this is okay. And let, and very last thing I say is, I mean, I've been saving a lot of water in this past five years, and it seems to me that my reward for saving all this water in these past years And it seems to me that my reward for saving all this water in these past years is more rate increases. I just don't understand that, you know? So I appreciate you keeping these rates way, way down or zero and manage your expenses appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. As I mentioned uh, previously to our, one of our last speakers, uh, we gen- we have a number of public hearings regarding um, water rates. Uh, if you check our site, um, ValleyWater.org, you will see the uh, the dates all listed of, of our public hearings. Uh, any, any other public comment?
I have two more. A Mr. Richard Scott.
We have, we have two more. Mr. Scott?
Yes, my name is Richard Scott. I am the former supervisor of the county, original county mental health homeless team. I work at the encampments constantly now. I have to say that, that um, the other day, there was, the water district did a sweep down by Alma and Lee Lawn. I talked to the crews there. They were right near Alma. There were five uh, ladies who were living in small little tents. Uh, the first day they seemed to sweep the garbage. The next day they were on the other side of the river. They told me that we're not going to tear down the encampments and they did. You know, the brutality, they, we've got to start working with the homeless, not doing things to them. This has been going on. I saw a, a blurb, you know, from 2017 when people were talking about sanctioned encampments. The flood is coming. When the horrendous torrentory ends, the area will be flooded. The city and the water district need to start thinking about what they're going to do with all these newly unhoused people. There is no way that you can build out of this. You've got to deal with people where they are, provide them with services and help them in their daily lives. Sure, there are a lot of bad actors out there and they prey as much on the homeless as, as a, you know, as other people from the outside. If you go along the Spring Street, you will see, um, you know, just uncontrolled encampments. The, the level of meth use in the community is getting just completely out of hand. The violence that around San, San Francisco is getting out of hand. And if you don't do something to improve people's lives, it's going to get worse. You know that you can't house those people. Chasing them around the city serves nothing. You should have a policy whereby if you're going to do a sweep and move, tear down people's encampments, have a place for them to go. Another plot of land and then provide services so you know where they are. You know, one of the main things that happens to folks who even begin to get help is their workers cannot find them after you chase them around. So I beg you to start thinking about the people out there is not the homeless, but as human beings who have every need, you know, that each of us in houses have. So I would appreciate it gracefully, gratefully if you would really can reconsider. Those of you in political positions, if those of you on the water board need to go out the encampments and talk to people and realize who they are. A lot of these people could be very productive. A lot of them in fact are. And they go out, they may lose their, their place to live. They live in their car. Then their car gets towed over and over and over. I see people who are productive, who lose their vehicles, no longer can go to work. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Uh, we have another person?
We have one more member of the public, Mr. Craig Ferguson.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, uh, good morning, um, folks. Um, my name's Craig Ferguson. As you said, I'm, I'm resident District Eight. Um, with the rate increase about to, that you guys are trying to impose and I know I heard the gentleman say that you have other talks on it, but uh, now is my time to speak and I, I, I prefer to take that time as right now. Um, with, as stated earlier, with the rate increases, um, most folks, when they do get a raise, they, the raises are never 10%, 3% if anyone's lucky. Um, with the pandemic going on, most of us, a lot of us are out of work or work has been, uh, pay has been reduced tremendously. A 10% rate increase at this time is, is in my opinion absurd. Yes, everyone needs raids, raises and rates must go up. I understand that. Um, a few years ago when we had the uh, wh- when we had the um, water shortage, I saved a tremendous amount of water and as stated earlier, I got no benefit from it. The rates still went up. Um, the water rates going up at a 10% rate is too much at one time. I'd like to see a show of hands of how many of you on this Zoom meeting will be affected by the 10% rate increase. Just by show of hands if you can. Well, I see no hands going up, so.
I'll be affected because we all have to pay it.
Well, I, I mean, I just asked for a show of hands, whether you're listening or you're not. Um, but 10% rate increase as stated earlier is way too much, way too soon. And I'm going to yield the rest of my time at this time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Anybody else?
That is it for the members of the public. I have, um, Mayor Licardo.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I appreciate that we're in the very final minutes here and we haven't addressed the third item, uh, particularly around water supply. I know that many of us have strong interests. In fact, when I reached out to Dave Sykes about setting up this meeting, it was really because I was primarily concerned about water supply issues. Uh, I would like to suggest if uh, the Valley Water Board was, was open to it, to have any water, Valley Water staff come to council at a meeting. We can set it that everyone's convenient. Uh, simply to present on that item as part of one of our council meetings, we'd certainly invite Valley Water uh, board members that they'd like to come to, to be able to speak, uh, that would certainly be welcome. But really for us to be able to hear the information, understand it, have the time to be able to discuss it in some depth.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. No problem. We'll work that out. We'll schedule it out. And yeah, as some of us board members will definitely join you.
Yeah, we welcome that.
Yes. All right. So if we're ready, then we'll wrap up and um.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We have Councilmember Mayhem.
Yes.
Yeah. I think, I think the mayor covered it well. I just wanted to reinforce. I think this third item is, is particularly important and, and I'm hearing a lot from our community, a lot of questions about water supply and, and rate increases. So glad to hear we're going to have that follow-up. Thank you.
Yes. And as I mentioned, for those folks that are listening, uh, we have a number of public hearings regarding water rates. Uh, so it's uh, we don't have one meeting. We have a number of meetings. We basically started actually in the winter before. So we started um, discussing rates, supply uh, since last September for, for next year. So it's a process that we follow, but we'll go through that uh, and share it with um, with, with council members. We're happy to do that. So on the wrap-up, uh, let me just quickly say, uh, as a champion of recycle, um, uh, you know, in eight months, um, we had a 45-year agreement. So I have every um, expectation. I have every hope uh, and every confidence that uh, we can, uh, we can get together, uh, coordinate, collaborate and come up with an agreement that will be effective and acceptable to all of us. We all represent the same people. And one of the reasons that, the many reasons that we favor citing in San Jose is because 1 million people, that's half of the population in the whole county. So if we're going to concentrate and centralize recycling in the county, we still believe it ought to be in San Jose, right there, right next to our water purification center. Mr. Mayor, um, closing remarks?
No, I think you said it very well, uh, Chair, and we look forward to collaborating on this important project and many others.
Mayor, uh, excuse me for interrupting, but I see that there's still attendees and I hate for our residents not to be able to speak um, since they've been joining, uh, uh, listening to us for quite a bit now. I think there's one more additional resident that's.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Do we have any more, um, members of the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I have a Mr. Mike Duffy and um, uh, constituent by the name of Janet and then uh, Ms. Chris Pilsen.
Okay.
Mike, Mr. Mike Duffy.
Uh, Ms. Duffy.
Hi, everybody. Um, sorry, I was going to speak at the next agenda item, but it sounds like it's not going to be uh, heard today. Uh, and then the comment section at the end of the meeting, and that sounds like it's not going to happen either. So I'm jumping in now. Uh, good morning, Chair Astramera, Mayor Licardo, and members of the board and city council, Mike Duffy. I'm the president of Valley Waters Professional Association and I'm here representing Valley Waters unit managers. As we've heard during the previous discussion today, the work to provide essential water supply for the valley is ongoing, complex, or intensive, and sometimes controversial. But I believe we can all agree that the work is necessary, essential and vital to the future of our valley and to the people who live and work here. I'm here to let you know that the Professional Managers Association, IFPTE Local 21 and the other bargaining units here at Valley Water, support Valley Waters proposed budget and the associated water rates because the proposed budget supports Valley Water's important water supply infrastructure maintenance and improvement efforts by adding critically needed staff and expertise to Valley Water and ensuring that the funding and resources needed for this important work are secured. It's also important to point out that the budget and proposed water rate will not only help Valley Water, it will also create an estimated 4,000 private water sector jobs that will be necessary to complete the essential work associated with it. It's important to support this work and the people who will benefit from it. Please join us in supporting the proposed budget and water rates. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Next.
I have a constituent by the name of Janet.
Janet.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much for um, having this meeting. I really did not want to, uh, I really wanted to go ahead and listen to the presentation about the rate increases. So disappointed that we went through this meeting and the time has uh, gone away and we can't listen to it and then have more comment. But uh, what I will say is that in terms of the Palo Alto and overlaying San Jose plan for water purification, it's disappointing to hear that um, on one hand, you're ready to sign an agreement that's like Palo Alto. On the other hand, people are saying, no, that won't work. San Jose wants details upfront. Palo Alto was working through them as they go. So I, I mean, it seems like we're way behind on that and you guys need to get it together like quickly. No more, no more missing around on that. In terms of the water rate increase, um, I think that with COVID and with all the things that the city has gone through and in terms of trying to feed people, in terms of getting people vaccinated, people not being able to go to work, people not um, being schooled correctly and folks that just simply can't afford their rent or their water bills to impose a 10% increase at this time is terrible. If anything, you need to look at the projects that are on the table and try to minimize those. Look at ways to save. And then possibly if you need to increase, do small incremental increases that help the families and residents of San Jose. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next.
I have Ms. Chris Pilsen.
Uh, Ms. Nelson?
Pilsen.
Oh, Pilsen.
Thank you, Chair Astramera and members of the board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Chris Pilsen, president of the Employees Association, Ask Me Local 101, the largest bargaining unit representing over 500 employees here at Valley Water. I am here to express our support for the proposed budget. The proposed budget includes a number of positions which will increase boots on the ground and will help support our work in maintaining our creeks and waterways, removing invasive vegetation, improving habitat and increasing flow capacity to reduce the potential for flooding. Thank you for your time and we look forward to increased resources to better serve our community.
Thank you, Ms. Pilsen. Next.
We have uh, Mr. Robert Reese.
Mr. Reese.
I want to reiterate my support for this joint meeting concept. It's been really great and appreciate your time today. Also, I wanted to let you know that uh, there are letters from other community members which directors and council members may not yet have seen. Also, I don't know if the directors had seen Sylvia Arenas's memo to the city which drills down deeply into the relationship between the pandemic, the stimulus funding. And I think it would be important that director saw that. Very much appreciate the directors foregoing the increase last year. I think through working together and maybe looking at Councilmember Arenas's model in her memo, there can be some additional collaboration. Uh, I presume there's going to be federal rule writing by the agencies on how the stimulus is used. Perhaps uh, the district and the city can work together in that rule writing uh, to abate as much of this potential increase as possible. Have a good weekend, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Uh, we'll have, uh, make sure that our CEO uh, shares a, a copy of that with all our board members. But next person? Thank you, Mr. Reese.
Uh, Ms. Marisala Garcia.
Ms. Garcia.
Sorry about that. I had a little problem with the mute button. Can everyone hear me?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Uh, can you? Ho- hold on just a second. You're next, but go on, Ms. Garcia.
Um, good, uh, thank you, Chair Astramera and members of the board, um, and Mayor Sam Licardo and city council members. Um, I'm here representing the Engineer Society as president. Um, I just wanted to go ahead and echo what Mike Duffy and Chris Pilsen have uh, put forward. Um, we're here in support of um, the proposed budget in, uh, rate increase. And um, we just want to continue working um, hard to provide the infra- infrastructure um, to continue the, the important work that Valley Water does in our community. So, uh, without taking any more time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Uh, next is there one, just one more person?
I have, I have two more.
Two more people, okay.
A uh, Mr. Jeremy Barros.
Uh, Mr. Barros. Uh, Barosi.
Barosi.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, it is Barosi. Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Astramera and members of the board and the city council. My name is Jeremy Barus. I am president of the District Eight Community Roundtable. I strongly urge this body to uh, uh, against uh, the proposed water rate increases. While we may uh, be slowly reopening and seeing light at the end of the tunnel, uh, for many San Jose families know, uh, are still struggling to get back on their feet. Uh, there could be opportunities in the future where families look at their water bill and make sacrifices on what to pay, whether they pay their water bill or pay their groceries or their rent. Uh, that's why I strongly urge uh, against the rate increases and hope that, you know, this body has this unique opportunity to stand up for San Jose families. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. One more?
Uh, I have one more, a c- the constituent with the last, the three phone numbers of 140.
140, good afternoon.
Good, good afternoon. A 10% rate increase? You guys can't even talk about it, right? You guys skipped right over it. And then we get a bunch of scripted people from the water company talking about more jobs. You got, you guys are terrible.
You already had your three minutes.
Yeah, you know what? It does, no, you didn't pick up. You didn't pick up on me. You skipped over me. You skipped over me. You skipped over the, what, what was gonna, what you were going to go over anyway. You guys didn't even want to talk about the rate increase because you're afraid to. You guys are afraid to talk about the rate increase. Everybody knows about it. It's not a secret. But you're, you refuse. You guys are refusing to do this. You know what? I'm going to go waste seven gallons of water. So I got to go, I'm going to, I want to go puke in my toilet about what you guys were talking about today. About how stressed out your staff is and you need more workers and more pay. You know what you guys need to do? How about a rate decrease? How about laying off some people who sit around with their feet up at that Valley Water building? You guys don't do anything. You, all you can do is poison the water with fluoride. You, 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 you don't, you don't practice good infrastructure uh, rebuilding. You guys don't do anything. You guys are, you don't even know what waterway is what. You know that? You don't know if it's, you don't know if it's county. You don't know if it's city. You don't know if it's yours. You don't know if it's state. You guys need to answer some questions because you have been sitting on a gold mine so long, you don't realize it. But now you want to increase the water 10%, people can't afford that. How about the people who can? Do they want to? Who wants to pay you guys another 10%? You have it buried. I want everyone listening. It's buried in your state uh, tax. It's buried in your state uh tax for your, for your property tax. You guys bury the water in the garbage, just like the mafia would do. You guys are a high-tech mafia, you know, that gives out free calendars. By the way, nice calendar, by the way, that you guys sent me. It's the least you could do. I had to beg for it to get one, right? You should have sent them. Actually, maybe you shouldn't even send them. Maybe you shouldn't have them. It's a waste of paper. You all, you should be ashamed of yourselves, really. It's, you should take a good, hard look at yourself in the mirror and and see who you really are. And ask your family members if they like who you are. Ask anybody if they like who you are. You guys are horrible. You guys need to be reevaluated. You guys need, the the public should be way more demanding than what, than what has even been going on here today. I want to thank Mr. Ferguson for being a polite man. Listen to Mr. Ferguson. He's the face of the rate payer here in in this county. Is it you guys? Or you guys get a discount on your bill, don't you? You know what? I want you to tell the public what your discount is on your water bill. I'd like to know.
Thank you. I wa- I want to again uh thank Mayor Licardo and uh the members of the city council uh for joining us today. That these discussions have been helpful and of course we'll continue um those discussions as we go along. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
We're ready to adjourn.
Okay, thank you.
So we're now adjourned to our regular meeting at 6:00 PM on March 23rd, 2021.
The council is also adjourned until Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you.